Welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. It's August 8th and it's 6:00, not 6:01, and we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's do that.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Friday, the United States of America, and to a republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give us this nice touch.
So first up, we always start with public audience. I'm not sure how many people are here. I know that Joan Coe is here. I just want to remind people, we have an anti-harassment policy. We follow Robert's Rules of Order, and we try not to make any personal attacks to people here, and things try to apply to the agenda and current events. So would you like to? Yes. And we have five minutes. We won't interrupt you, but we'll stop you at five minutes.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. At the July 11, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting, First Electman Wendy Maxtousis stated that public audience is regulated by the town policy governing harassment and Robert's Rules of Order. The Board of Selectmen are governed by the Constitution of the United States with First Amendment rights, which state, quote, "Amendment one, Congress shall not make no law abridging the freedom of speech," end quote. First Electman Wendy Maxtousis does not have the right to set guidelines for speech in a public forum. She is not a dictator but an elected official to hear concerns of the electorate. What is more dangerous is that the selectmen do not call her out for her anti-American comments. The Board of Selectmen are guided by the federal lawsuit that was negotiated settlement to require public audience at all meetings. The settlement is affixed to the wall right here in the main meeting room that the Board of Selectmen should read before they limit speech. The Board of Selectmen should uphold the Constitution or resign. On August 9th, the Democrats will have an opportunity to vote for Simsbury State Representative that was vacated by John Hampton. The candidates are Eric Wellman and Melissa Osborne. Past First Electman Mary Glassman and Nina Millard are endorsing Melissa Osborne, as has past State Representative John Hampton. John Hampton ran and opposed for State Representative because he respects the values of Simsbury. Mike Long, Chip Polahan, Steve Antonio, and Dave Richmond are also endorsing Melissa Osborne. Melissa's Osborn's endorsements come from people who have served many years of public service to the town and have exhibited leadership abilities. One should ask themselves, why would all the people endorse Melissa Osborne and not the endorsed candidate of the Democratic Town Committee, Eric Wellman? The Democratic Town Committee has aligned itself with Bernie Sanders, left-wing radical that are interested in defunding the police, use the critical race theory in our schools, teach sex education to our elementary school children, and increase taxes. Eric Wellman is a woke candidate that does not believe in the rule of law. Eric Wellman does not represent the values of Simsbury and should not be elected as State Representative. Recently, I asked to view the Board of Selectmen conflict of interest forms, a result of allegation that Eric Wellman had a sweetheart deal with Nancy Grandin to promote him on social media. In the Hartford Current story, quote, "Wellman says, 'I pretty much do whatever Nancy tells me to do,'" end quote. Is Nancy Grandin being paid to be Wellman's social media specialist, or is it a gift or favor that should be noted? Eric Wellman was suffered nothing to promote himself, would use all the means to further his political career, as noted in his political gathering at the Simsbury Meadows. Eric Wellman has lost the public trust and should not be elected at Simsbury State Representative. The primary election is Tuesday, August 9th, with Eric Wellman running against Melissa Osborne. Since the promotion of Chief Balter to his present position of chief, the Simsbury Police Department has had low morale and institutional failures. Chief Balter's vindictive is shown by his firing of Sergeant Trumbly for rumors that Chief Balter said he is not pleased with some officers. The police union voted no confidence in Chief Balter. Several officers have filed legitimate grievances in the past that were followed by internal investigations that discredit the grievance. The performance of our rank-and-file officers are excellent, although they feel they have a target on their back when they come to work due to the management style of Chief Balter. A promotion list for sergeants has languished in the files, and the increased workload in the detective division has only two officers. A detective sergeant has not been chosen for this position, although several officers have applied. It is alleged Sergeant Sagan has shown interest in this position, although his past performances do not qualify him for the position. It appears that Sergeant Sagan has a history of bullying, intimidating people, and a history of uncontrolled anger management issues that have surfaced over the years. Sergeant Sagan's past performance should disqualify him for an appointment to the detective division. At the July 11, 2022 Board of Selectmen, Steve Mitchell addressed the board about lack of maintenance on the trails. Although the board has a policy not interacting with people in public audience, Steve Mitchell, the staff, and board spent 5 minutes and 25 seconds discussing the issue, inconsistent with their policy. When I spoke, I received a lecture on my speech and was interrupted. I was chastised. Steve Mitchell was embraced. So much for equal justice, and all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Pat, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan.
Wendy, if I may, I'd like to read a statement.
Is that appropriate?
The allegations that Ms. Coe has made about Ms. Grandin and the Simsbury Pollinator Pathway are verifiably untrue. They amount to libel and slander. The town has never contributed a penny to the Simsbury Pollinator Pathway nonprofit organization. You can verify this by reviewing the last town budget. We have set aside money to plant pollinators, but that money was given to the Parks Department, not the nonprofit organization. It's just so sad that Ms. Coe would choose to vilify community volunteers who've given thousands of hours to this town over multiple decades. I've also never compensated Ms. Grandin for her volunteer work on any of my campaigns. This is also independently verifiable. You can pull my SEEK forms. As an elected official, I am fair game. I am a fair game for a target of your criticism, but I would hope that that criticism has a factual basis. But community volunteers are not a fair target. Ms. Coe assassinates people's character through lies and innuendo, and our Board of Selectmen meetings, and I would hope we would all agree, should not be a platform to bully and harass members of this community.
Thank you. Okay, on public audience.
That's Eric.
Hi, I'm Jane Spacher-McAlpine, One Tower Drive, and I'm speaking to you today as Vice President of Simsbury Pollinator Pathway, commonly called SPP. On behalf of SPP, I would like to reiterate our town's recognition, or rather, our organization's recognition of the town's support for pollinator-friendly spaces in Simsbury. In light of some recent false commentary, I also want to reiterate that SPP is a nonprofit corporation dedicated to increasing community awareness of the importance of pollinator-friendly spaces and creating and assisting in the creation of such pollinator-friendly spaces in Simsbury. We welcome support for our efforts from all individuals, regardless of political affiliation. I myself am unaffiliated. Surely, nothing is more nonpolitical than coming together to enhance the environmental health and beauty of our town, protecting creatures, great and small, as beautiful to the eyes as butterflies, and as important to our food supply as bees. Such spaces involve native plantings that provide food and shelter for pollinators and generally require less care and watering, the non-natives of less environmental value. SPP receives no financial assistance from the town of Simsbury. It is 100% a volunteer organization, and none of our board members or officers earn any fees or make any money from our efforts. It is truly a work of community service. Thank you again for your support for our efforts. And now speaking, as a private citizen, not affiliated with SPP, I just want to recognize the contributions of this town to open space. Recently, the state of Connecticut has stated that their goal by 2023 is to preserve up to 21% of the state's land for open space. So I was heavily involved in Meadowwood. I want to thank all the community volunteers, members of this board, and across the town who supported that initiative. I think we are setting a great example, and I'm pleased to say that the state of Connecticut shares our goals. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members here for public audience? Okay, that ends public audience. We have two presentations tonight. We have Lisa Gray here for the Recovery Friendly Initiative update, and then we're going to have a ClearGov demonstration. So Lisa, come on up.
Okay, thank you.
We do try to keep people to 15 minutes. It's really not usually feasible, but we try.
Thank you very much. It should not be a problem. So good evening, everyone. I am Lisa Gray, founder and executive director of A Promise to Jordan. Happy to be here tonight, and many of you on the board, I know there are a few new people, but many of you may recall that I was here in March of 2022 at your very last meeting before, you know, everything went crazy with the pandemic. And at that time, I was introducing you to an initiative being led by the State of Connecticut Alcohol and Drug Policy Council, their Recovery and Health Management Subcommittee, to designate Connecticut communities as recovery-friendly. At the conclusion of my presentation, you did appoint A Promise to Jordan to be the champion to lead the efforts necessary to have the town of Simsbury recognized as a recovery-friendly community. So tonight, I wanted to update you on our work so far. So if you wouldn't mind progressing to the next slide, please. Since that time, and that's going to be difficult for you guys over here to read, I don't know if you can enlarge that a little bit for them, but since that time, despite significant restrictions and disruptions due to COVID-19, A Promise to Jordan has been working to meet as many criteria as possible on the spreadsheet that's provided by the council to provide guidance to municipalities interested in supporting their residents and visitors in recovery. So I won't go through every one of these criterion, but I did want to touch on just a few this evening. The first thing I'd like to tell you about is the really comprehensive webpage that was put together by Josh Marcus, who was one of your spring interns here with the town back in like April-May timeframe, and it's now part of the town website. I'm going to show it to you in a few minutes, but he was really able to incorporate so many of the criteria on these pages that's truly making the webpage now a one-stop place for people to get help and information, and we really appreciate that. I also want to tell you about the phenomenal partnership that's happened between A Promise to Jordan and the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center as a result of this initiative. Though they're not officially a part of the town's Parks and Rec Department, they are certainly a premier provider of recreation in our town, and they, I'm going to tell you more about that collaboration in a minute. It's been really great. So working with the schools was probably the most challenging part of trying to meet these criteria, as we all know the restrictions imposed on the schools by the pandemic. So it was difficult to access the schools, first of all, or even to speak to someone in many instances, but I was finally able to, and we actually presented a program at Simsbury High School in April. So I'm looking forward to continuing to develop that relationship and work even more closely with Henry James and the elementary schools in the future. The police department was another challenge. I'm happy to report that the department does have a policy of not arresting individuals in possession of substances if there's no other crime that's been committed. However, there is more work to be done here. I met with the department leadership a couple of times during this process, and they were receptive to encouraging residents to seek treatment and providing resources, but I'd really like to have the opportunity to speak to the officers for a brief time during a shift change, to tell them what that might look like and how they might introduce some of these resources and treatment options to individuals on their calls, and I'd really like to see the community service officer making follow-up calls to individuals or family members after calls for service involving substance use, as they do for other types of calls, but I've been unable at this point to get them to agree to that. So we're going to keep working on that. We do not currently have any recovery housing available within town limits, and this is something that is greatly needed, especially for women, but recovery housing available within 20 miles of Simsbury is now listed on the new town webpage. We can go ahead to Slide 3. A great deal of the work that we've focused on has been identifying and recognizing those Simsbury businesses who self-identify as recovery-friendly, meaning that they support their current employees who have substance use issues or are in recovery, and that they're open to hiring employees who are in recovery. We've been able to identify 21 businesses so far, and this is an ongoing process. I'll share a list of those businesses with you in a moment. There is also a recovery-friendly Simsbury business Facebook page that I invite you all to visit and like, and we're working on a website that will showcase these businesses and express our gratitude for their commitment to this cause. We've identified the pharmacies in Connecticut or in Simsbury at least where people can obtain naloxone or Narcan, the opioid overdose reversal medication, and I'm happy to report that every pharmacy in Simsbury has Narcan in stock and will provide training on how to use it to anyone who goes in and asks for it. Most of the pharmacies do require a doctor's prescription, which is very easy to obtain, but the pharmacy at Stop &amp; Shop does not even require you to have a prescription. Just walk in, ask for it, they'll train you how to use it right there on the spot. Anyone can simply walk in. And I can't stress enough the importance of carrying Narcan with you at all times and being prepared to use it. You'd never know when you could be in a position to save a life. Simsbury doesn't have what we would consider a local hospital, but two of the hospitals most used by Simsbury residents, St. Francis and Hartford Hospital, do have recovery coaches on staff. These are individuals with personal or lived experience who work in the emergency department and meet with individuals and family members when they're brought in following a substance use incident or call, call for service, and can encourage and provide treatment resources, or they can simply be that caring person to talk to in a time of crisis when peer support is so crucial. UConn does not yet have these angels on staff, but we're hopeful that that will change very soon. Item F, Treatment and Recovery Resources. I'd like to give a plug to our organization here, actually. A Promise to Jordan has the most comprehensive listing of resources for help, with over 100 of them listed on our website, apromise2jordan.org. A link to our resource pages is now on the town website, and you can see on the right-hand side all of the other criteria that have been met by simply listing them on the town website that was created by Josh as well. So let's take a quick look at that webpage. Number four, if you could go there. Go ahead and can you, is that an active link? Will it go there? There. Okay.
It's on the Social Services page, right?
Yes. So Melissa's going to take you to that page, but as she does that, I'd like you to take note that if you don't know exactly where this page is, it can be very difficult to find, requiring multiple clicks from the homepage before you actually get to it. So I'd really, I'd like to see a link that goes directly to this page placed right on the homepage of the website, if that's possible. And I don't know if anybody needs to have that enlarged, but you can slowly scroll down and show that to them if you would, Melissa. Our status, once our status is declared, this will have to change. At the top does say that we're working on the recovery-friendly community status, so we'll need to change that once we are indeed a recovery-friendly community. But you can see that Josh did a great job of really covering everything and making this a one-stop, easy-to-use site with direct links to resources included throughout. I'd also like to draw your attention to the fact that the term substance abuse is not used anywhere on this page, nor have I used it in my presentation. The word abuse carries a negative stigmatizing connotation that we're encouraging people to get away from and stop using it in favor of the more appropriate terms, substance use or substance misuse. So the page was very well done, and we're very happy to have it. And thanks to the town and to Josh. All right, you want to go on to five? So I mentioned earlier that a great collaboration has developed between A Promise to Jordan and Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center.
They just happen to be here tonight.
Yes. For those of you who attended any of the concerts in the Talkeant Mountain Music Festival series, you may have noticed a designated substance-free zone. You'll see the signage on the left there. This began with the first concert as a result of our conversations with the pack and will be a fixture at all future large pack events, we're very happy to say. It's a space where individuals in recovery or simply non-substance users can sit and enjoy the show without the discomfort that may come from others near you drinking or smoking. I attended four of the five concerts of the festival this year, and the zone was full at every concert. I was very happy to see. So we're also hoping that we may have more alcohol-free options available at some of the shows as well, beyond, you know, seltzer and soda type of things. Another thing that came out of our conversations with the pack was the desire to host a recovery-friendly festival in Simsbury, so we're doing just that. The festival is called Simsbury Untapped, and it will take place on Sunday, September 25th. You'll see the flyer forward on the right there. But this will not be an entirely recovery-focused festival, but rather a fun day where any member of the community can come with their families, listen to great music, have something to eat and drink, view our art show that'll be on display, take part in children's activities like the bounce house and face painting. So it'll be really just like any other festival, only no alcohol will be served. September is National Recovery Month, so it will be at this event that we will announce Simsbury's recovery-friendly community recognition, as well as recognize and celebrate our recovery-friendly businesses. And the next slide. So here is a list of Simsbury's self-identified recovery-friendly businesses. There is an organization in Hartford called Amplify Inc. that the state has contracted with to identify and certify all the recovery-friendly businesses in the state of Connecticut, and a representative from Amplify will be in Simsbury Thursday of this week and next Tuesday to visit as many of these businesses as possible with me, and Simsbury is actually the first community that she's visiting to do that, so we're very proud of that.
Could you just touch upon what exactly does that mean? What is a recovery?
It means that they have committed to assisting any employees they currently have who are battling substance use disorders, helping them get into treatment, maintaining their employment while they're in treatment, as well as any employees who are in recovery. If there are any needs, if they have to go to meetings or whatever their needs are to maintain their recovery, they're supportive of that, and they're also committed to hiring individuals who are in recovery as new employees and supporting them as well. So any other questions or anything I've mentioned so far? All right then, final slide. There's just one final step in the process of being recognized as a recovery-friendly community, and that is for you as town leadership to declare that you believe Simsbury to be a recovery-friendly community.
That was a question I was talking to Maria about before. What else do we need to do to make that happen, other than just say it?
Yes, just agree to it today and have it in your minutes, and that's it.
And is there any?
Proclamation?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Do we need to do a proclamation resolution, which we could bring to the next meeting potentially, and have the board weigh in on if we agree to move forward with this?
I think that would be a good idea. That would be very nice, yes.
Something we would want to do. And then the other, I just one question. Is there any sort of maintenance requirement to be a recovery-friendly organ? Like, does it just?
The town does not require, I mean, the state does not require, no, but A Promise to Jordan isn't going anywhere, and this is a very important initiative for us. So we're going to keep trying to identify those recovery-friendly businesses and making sure recovery-friendly events are offered, and that we're doing programs in the schools. All of this is all part of our mission, is very, very important to us, so it's not going anywhere.
Okay, so I think, is there consensus among the board that we would want to do a proclamation or resolution? I'm not sure which one it is, one or the other, at our next meeting, but that we would agree to just issue that next time.
I do have one more question. You were scanning through the spreadsheet. Your comment that I missed, the schools offer substance abuse and problem gambling to be, yes, but then you said you didn't have a chance to do what? You hadn't had a chance, is it basically observe some of them?
We haven't had much contact with the middle school and the elementary schools, perhaps, is what I referred to, and so I'm hoping to be able to develop those relationships in the future as things open up a little bit more and we have better access and staffing is at a better level.
We appreciate you as a champion for this throughout the town, and your training that I've been to is really helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, and I can't thank you enough for the support that we've received really from the very beginning in July 2018. We just observed our four-year anniversary, believe it or not, and, I mean, it could have gone completely the opposite, but we've received such tremendous support from this community, really everyone, and we're very, very appreciative.
Great.
All right.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. Okay, our next item. Make sure he's there before I give an intro. Sean's not doing the demo, I don't think. Sorry. Does Rob, do you know if he's waiting?
He's there.
Okay, so can he, do you want to let him on and then?
He is on.
Oh, he is? We don't.
I don't know if I just don't have the camera.
Oh, okay. So we're having a demo on ClearGov. It's a software package. I'm just going to give a little background on it. I was at the CCM convention last November, and Rob was there doing a demo of the digital budget book, and this is around the time, you know, we had just gone through our budget, and we get our big giant budget book in a big binder, and they have an online version that multiple towns have been onboarding to, making it very easy for the public to see what's going on, and also for the boards to have access to the same exact information. He also did a presentation at Cost, and he, actually, in the spring, I brought him in to meet with Maria, Melissa, Amy, Lisa, our Board of Finance chair, to get an idea of, you know, cost, what it looked like, if it was a potential for us, and I felt that there's also a big capital component in here that, given that our goals include long-range capital planning, and it seems like a lot of us are putting that in as a goal, I thought it would be worthwhile to see what he has for us and to think about that. I don't like being one of the only people to know that that's out there, so I wanted other people to see what I've seen and keep it in mind as we go through our goals, as we go move towards our budget and start looking at capital. So that's my background. I'd let Rob on to take it away.
Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate the intro. I just need the screen share access that's disabled for me right now to present.
That's what I wanted.
There we go. Can you see my screen and hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. So again, my name is Rob Bataglia. I am the market development executive for ClearGov, and I want to thank the board for allowing me to present this evening. For those who might not be as familiar with our company as Wendy, we are a cloud-based budgeting software company. We work with about 20 local governments in the state of Connecticut alone. We work with about 700 local governments across the United States, and all of our software is designed to serve as a complement to the town's existing financial system. So the town currently uses Munis as its accounting software of our nearly 20 clients in Connecticut and our 700 across the country. I would say Munis is by far the most common accounting software we work with. So the point I'm trying to make here is that the town can use its existing financial system and really think of ClearGov as a way to digitize certain specific aspects of the budget process that are currently being done in things like spreadsheets or Word documents. We offer a handful of different modules around specific aspects of the budget process, but for today's presentation, we're going to focus on two specific modules that the town leadership has been looking at. So the first one is our digital budget book software. So this solution is designed really to do three things. Number one, this is going to take your Munis data and automate the process that goes into building the town's budget book or budget document. So instead of that 200, 300-plus-page PDF document, the town manager's proposed budget, Board of Selectmen approved budget, the final adopted budget, rather than using Word, Excel, Munis reports to compile that and build that document, our software's going to automate and streamline that process. So save the town's finance team a ton of time in building the annual budget, but more importantly, it's going to digitize the presentation of that document as well. So you're going to save a ton of time building the book, and you're going to be able to present your book instead of a static PDF in a digital, interactive, website-based format that's mobile-friendly, that's ADA-optimized, that can be updated dynamically. Our software also allows for print the PDF functionality as well, so you get the best of both worlds. The third thing this software's going to be doing is it's built around the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. That is the industry's highest standard of building a budget document. There's about 20, 25 communities in the state of Connecticut who currently win a GFOA award. Not only is there no variety that goes along with that, but the GFOA award, GFOA award-winning communities tend to have a strong correlation between things like high bond ratings and things like that, so it really just signifies that your community's doing the best possible work in terms of presenting and communicating the budget internally and externally. The other solution we're going to take a quick look at is our capital budgeting software. So rather than using spreadsheets and Word forms or antiquated databases to compile your capital requests and build your one-year capital budget and multi-year capital improvement plan, we have a web-based solution where the finance team, department heads, board members can all play around in one cloud-based environment to collect those capital requests, review those capital requests, score them, run multiple scenarios, and then also present that final capital budget and capital plan in a digital, interactive environment. So we're going to take a look at the budget book software first. I have here one of the town's 23 I have here one of the town's 23 budget documents. We'll look at the Board of Selectmen approved budget for 2023. Most communities out there, unless they're using ClearGov, they're pretty much putting a PDF on the website and calling it a day. So I want you all to imagine, instead of a document like this on your website, 4DFY24, I want you to imagine, instead of something like this, we could have something like this. So this is the town of Woodbridge. This is their digital budget book. And again, this software would complement Munis. It takes the Munis data, whether it be in Munis itself or in external spreadsheet, and this software's gonna automate for you a budget document out of the box. So what we're looking at is what the Board of Selectmen could be looking at on an iPad that's given to them, or emailed to them ahead of a meeting, or what members of the public could look at when they're on the town's website. And you can just see out of the box, this is much more easier to navigate rather than a PDF. Again, the amount of time that goes into building that PDF, it'll be a fraction of that time to build this budget book, and our software will also not only create a document for you, but create a document built around the GFOA award out of the box, give you a lot of templated pages, a GFOA checklist with best practices for your team to adhere to. But let's just take a look at it from a comparative perspective. Here's an example of Woodbridge's general fund page. So our software will take your Munis data during the initial onboarding, and throughout the budget process, you can send out how much data you want. And from a trending perspective, here's their summary overview for the general fund. And you can just see out of the box, looking at this graph, this is digital, this is interactive. You could imagine a board member, department head, someone in the town manager's office, or members of the public coming in here, just being able to slice and dice and play around with the data. Here's the revenue sources for the upcoming year presented. You know, when you're building your budget, presenting it in a PDF, you're gonna have to pick and choose, all right, if we're gonna build a graph on this page, what kind of graph do we want to build? We have to do it manually. We have to pick and choose whether it's a pie chart or a bar chart. With ClearGov, you can not only automate the process with showing the graphs, but they're digital, they're interactive, and you can stack multiple views on top of each other. So maybe certain members of the Board of Selectmen want to see things in a pie chart, others want to see it in a mountain or trending chart. So it gives the viewer of this document and the folks trying to understand the budget story, the finance team and the town manager's office is trying to put out there, just presents it in a much more user-friendly experience. Here's the expenses broken down for the town of Woodbridge by function. Whatever the town of Simsbury's chart of accounts is, whatever your account structure looks like internally, that's what's gonna be built into ClearGov. So our software's built around your process, the way you present the data. It's really just trying to digitize what you're currently doing, and obviously save everyone a ton of time in putting together this document. In addition to the interactive parts and graphs, there's also the spreadsheet-level details, and these are totally customizable. You can see the different columns in here, like your budget reports have. We just looked at expenses by function, which is kind of maybe broken down by department or division. Here, we're looking at the same data from a different dimension. Now we're looking at it from an object-level perspective. So what's nice is not only can I show my budget by fund, but I can show it by fund in a couple different ways. So, you know, maybe someone is saying, hey, I want to see public work spending. Maybe somebody else is saying, hey, what's salaries over the last 10 years? Rather than the finance team having to run reports, imagine it's up to the user how they want to consume the data and see the story, again, you're trying to tell. You can even upload your fund balance content, and it'll create charts and graphs around that as well. Everything I've showed you thus far, other than a little bit of text that was all the way at the top of the page, this is all automated by the software out of the box on day one.
So when you say, I have a question for you. When you say out of the box day one, we install it, it talks to Munis, and there's no configuration whatsoever?
Out of the box, meaning you've gone through the implementation process already?
Yeah, so that's not out of the box. You mean, somebody has to do implementation, right?
When I say out of the box, I mean, the moment someone goes to create the document on day one of the budget process that new year...
Understood that. What I'm asking is when I install the software, somebody still has to spend time to hook it up to Munis, right?
So, our, correct. There's an implementation process.
At the APIs.
Basically, it's a 60 to 90-day period. Our team does all the heavy lifting to build that. The product your team is sending us, a couple Munis reports. We actually have an onboarding document per Munis documents on exactly what to give us.
Okay.
But when I say out of the box, and what we're talking about right now is more from the user's perspective during the budget.
Jack, a quick question. Do you think that...
I'm not worried about the user right now. I'm worried about how much, how much time it's gonna cost us to implement it.
Yeah, do we have that, do we have that capability in-house?
It would be very challenging right now. As you all recall, we did receive funding for the Munis acquisition. We are implementing that for not only the town, but the Board of Education as well. Thus far, we have implemented, and Amy, please correct me if I'm misspeaking, but we have implemented the general ledger. We've implemented payroll for the town side. We're in process for payroll for the Board of Ed side. We have not yet implemented the budgeting module in Munis, so that is still forthcoming as a future project, but we have to implement the HR module prior to that.
I'm sorry, that wasn't my question. I wasn't clear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, fantastic work. You just...
Thanks.
We actually have the tech, we have the capabilities in our in-house IT team to do the mapping, so that we're not paying for additional onboarding and integration services aspect of the project potential.
The startup fee typically we would be charged for, and we'll need that assistance. And then again, just from like a capacity and workload standpoint, the, like, I just want to be very clear about the budgeting module in Munis is not yet built out, it's not yet being utilized. That will come after the HR module. So there's still that, that would have to be in place before we could really, I think, proceed to use this effectively.
So I have a couple of questions. I know Rob is on there. What's the timeline for the, for us to fully implement Munis?
I mean, we were supposed to be fully implemented within a year, and then COVID happened, and we had issues on their end, we had issues on our end. So, right now, we're done with the finance modules, the payroll module on the town side. We're working on the payroll module on the Board of Ed side, and then, like Maria said, HR's next, and then we'll transition over to budget. If I were to guess, it'd probably still be another year out.
Okay, and Rob, I was just gonna ask Rob, because we've talked about this in our session too, in that once we're connected and fully into Munis, it's pretty much like upload APIs to your products, and from what you've presented to us in the past, it's been done by current staff at the other towns. Is that correct? Hopefully you're there.
So maybe, just for, just for greater context, so our implementation process from the ClearGov perspective is about 60 to 90 days. That includes, when we say 60, 90 days, that includes a four-to-five-week process for us to build your chart of accounts in, so we do that for you. That's included in the cost. That includes the configuration time we expect your team to use to set up the product in terms of picking, do you want 20 department pages, or do you want 30 department pages? Do you want to show your revenues before the department section or to the right of the department section, right? Simple configuration. And then training for the finance team, the town manager's office, and all of your department heads. So when I, 60 to 90 days from an implementation perspective, I mean, from contract sign to, you could have a budget book on the website completely done. From a Munis data setup perspective, it's four to five weeks for us to do that. It's about five to 10 minutes for you guys to run those Munis reports, and then maybe hopping on a review call or two during that four-to-five-week process for us to build out the product. You can even be in the software, though, on day one, configuring a lot of the non-financial content of the software. So theoretically, the most efficient clients, I have a couple Connecticut folks who've just signed up at the end of June 30th, they're recreating their FY23 budget book, they're gonna have that on the website within two months. From a data upload perspective, we actually take a different approach than most of the government technology out there. Rather than building these direct integrations that cost 10, 20, 50, $100,000 and incredibly expensive to maintain, you have to pay tons of consultative fees to maintain them, we've designed an import-export model. So if you ever wanted to build your budget in ClearGov down the line, and we'll talk about that on the capital module, all you gotta do is click a button, it spits out a Munis-friendly report, and you upload the Munis, and you call it a day. From getting your data from Munis into ClearGov, you don't even have to do it yourself. You send our team a file. There's all different types of Munis versions out there. Sometimes that data needs to be cleaned up. Our team cleans up the data for you. So when you're ready to build a budget book off of, like, if you, we're guys gonna build a budget book today off your FY23 adopted book, the way it would work is your finance team sends us a file that takes a couple minutes to run. Our team makes sure that data's clean, uploads it for you. That's about anywhere from a couple-day turnaround to a five-day turnaround, depending on how clean that data is, and then you build a book off of it. So, more of a longer-winded answer to that question, but I want to provide some context, and hopefully that'll make sense.
Yeah, no, it's really important, because it's, I mean, I appreciate the demo, but it's, as you can hear, we're in transition on the financial side, and that's where my questions were, is we haven't finished implementing Munis yet, and now we're looking at another budget solution, which, I mean, seems interesting, but I'm just trying to get a sense of when in our capacity of work we can handle that.
Let me explain.
Well, I think today's presentation, I think, we just, I think the goal, my understanding was to get this on you guys' radars. I mean, I'm doing presentations all the time to see if this is even something that aligns with the goals you guys are trying to do in terms of communicating the budget and accessibility, things like that. So I think whether it's a, you're looking at this from a one-month horizon or a five-year horizon, I think the first step is to make sure you guys like what other towns in Connecticut are doing, if that aligns with what you're trying to do.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care what other towns are doing. I care what makes sense for our residents and to make a good budgetary decision. So, I mean, what other towns do doesn't drive, doesn't drive my voting, but can you get into more of the line items?
Sean, Amber has a, Sean, Amber has a question here, so she's been trying to ask it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify, it sounds like we have a budgeting module in Munis, correct? So like, what we're looking at here would either, we would, it looks like there's a budgeting module for like the budget book, and then there's also a capital budgeting module. So would, if we used this ClearGov for our budget book, would we not implement the budget on Munis, or you would do both?
You do both. So Munis is, Munis is like...
I get it. Yeah.
I think for the public, though, the reason why, is that Munis is the system that we're, we've adopted and are moving into for the work, the budgetary work, and I think that we're looking at the aspect of this capability that creates the presentation, how it actually is presented to us and manipulated.
Right, but I don't think, I don't think Munis has a module for capital budgeting. Is that, or does it? It does? It does not? And it sounds like this does.
Yes.
We're gonna, so, so capital budgeting would be something that this is added on, but then, I think you're right, Chris, it sounds like ClearGov for the, for the regular budget is just, is it more of an add-on to the presentation?
Well, I was gonna say, and Rob can weigh in, just I made some notes as Rob's talked. You can get a historical, once you build it and you go from year to year, you can look back historically and see numbers from the prior year, rather than going back to the printed budget book to look things up. So it gives you a little bit of, you know, a better way for us as, you know, on the board, to be able to look back and see what's going on without asking for printouts or documents and things like that. That's, that was one piece that I was gonna add. Rob, do you wanna weigh in on that?
Yeah, so, no, we take an à la carte approach to our solutions, because not everyone has Munis. So we have a ton of clients who don't use Munis, and we hear good things about the Munis budget module. So, now there's some clients who have accounting systems that are from like the 1990s, and they're budget, building their budget in spreadsheets and their accounting system, you know, doesn't have a budget prep module. So we have a lot of clients who build their budget in ClearGov, they use our budget module, and then they use the budget book software to present it. Woodbridge is like you guys. They have the budget module with Munis. They were, they recently actually switched over to ClearGov, but this document, they built the budget using Munis. They liked that module at the time. Their struggle was, how do I communicate the budget to the public? The public didn't want to see a 300-plus-page report. They found it cumbersome, the board didn't like it. It wanted the ability to make it easier for everyone involved to see the budget, so they added the budget book software on to complement the process in Munis. So every community's a little different, but that's why, you know, Munis has a budget prep module, this would work with that. If, for some reason, you didn't want to use the Munis budget prep module, and you wanted to use a spreadsheet or something else, or ClearGov, this works with, this is accounting system agnostic, and quite frankly, budget system agnostic. Same thing from a capital perspective. Most communities, I mean, we work with billion-dollar counties out there who have a pretty great accounting system, a homegrown budget module, but capital's pretty limited, because capital, you gotta look at things from a five, 10, 20-year horizon. So they're using spreadsheets or Word documents for that process. That's why our capital software, that's also à la carte, so that could certainly complement the Munis budget module.
Yeah, and that was, so, we realized in the conversation that we had internally, just at the first Emma, was we didn't have capacity right now to onboard to the digital budget book. We didn't vote on it in the budget, but it's just something to think about going forward as we transition to Munis. We'll have the data all in Munis, and we could potentially move forward. The other aspect, the capital piece, is another highlight that we've been talking about, that we did have interest, because in the meeting, talking to Melissa and others, we currently just use spreadsheets and deal with the department heads, and there is no capital budget tool out there, and these guys have something there too, and it does do long-range planning. You can look, do a two-to-five or two-to-six-year look back. I don't know if you want to transition to that, Rob?
Rob, may I ask a quick question?
Oh, wait. Yeah, and Heather has a question here, too.
My question is, during implementation from Munis, what is your rate of kind of any sort of glitches or anything that's really come up as, as an issue in the implementation process?
You're saying in the ClearGov implementation process?
Yes, from Munis specifically. Is that something we...
Bad data, glitch, or something to that effect.
I mean, I mean, honestly, you know, to be completely candid, I would say the biggest thing is timing, right? Everything's about timing. So, you know, we work with, people use QuickBooks as their accounting software. Really, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be your accounting system that causes any problems, it's making sure your team has enough bandwidth to take this on. And when I say take it on, I mean, listen, I used to work in government, I get it, like, you want to accomplish something next week, and 20 things pop up, and that thing gets delayed a month. So anytime you take on a new initiative, whether it's one day of bandwidth or a month of bandwidth, it's making sure you're tackling it at the right time, and I think you guys are doing the right thing by, this is, this is the perfect time in the, in the year to look at this, after the budget, before the next budget cycle. So to be completely candid, I don't think it's gonna be, the challenges we see, and there's very few challenges, to be, to be completely candid, this isn't like onboarding a new accounting software that takes one year, two years, three years. This is, you know, weeks or months from an onboarding perspective. It's just making sure that, you know, you deploy this at the right time. Sometimes we have clients who get kind of, they get a little too enthusiastic, maybe, and they adopt this in the middle of their budget cycle, and next thing they know, you know, they want to get something done in two weeks, and two weeks turns into two months. So, you know, it's just making sure you do this at the right time. That'd be my thing in terms of challenges.
Yeah, okay.
Let me close.
And it also sounds like if we're in the middle of still implementing Munis modules, we should finish that before we would add this on, right? Like, how could you?
I mean, I mean, from my perspective and from our company's perspective, you're gonna be sending a spreadsheet data anyway, like, the reports you're gonna run out of Munis are still Excel reports, so where the data resides doesn't really matter from our perspective. I mean, you're still gonna be using Word and Excel to build that book. The data that will be powering this is still a spreadsheet. I mean, you know, the only reason you would, I would, I wouldn't think of it more of, oh, Munis is an up-and-run thing, we need to wait till that. It's more of, how much more time do you need to dedicate to Munis? So it's not so much that we need, we need Munis to be done, it's more like, if your team is telling you, hey, we're spending all of our day doing Munis, you know, implementation, then that would be more of the red flag, I would say, of things. It's more of a bandwidth, rather than a systems issue.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at 33% of our finance department in the front row, right? So that's...
Yeah, I hear you.
Right, and that's, that's one of the challenges, is we are a small town from So that's, right, I mean, that's, that's one of the challenges, is we are a small town from a staffing standpoint. Amy or Robert or somebody, how is this different from OpenGov that we currently have and, and that we know one in the public uses?
I mean, I can take that. So the OpenGov solution that I'm, that I understand you guys had was their transparency software, which is more of like a budget dashboard during the fiscal year. That software, although similar in maybe display in that it's web-based, this is for a totally different use case. You know, you guys are building this document, and you're building multiple of these documents every year. Our software's basically a document publishing software. Certainly, it's the prettiest publishing software out there, but it's, it's a, it's a software that is doing two things. It's replacing an antiquated process, right? So it's designed to save you time. That OpenGov solution you adopted, I don't know what that replaced. It may not have replaced anything. That may have been just extra work you guys decided to do, and that tends to be what we hear. So this is saving you time from a current process, and then obviously, the output of that current process is significantly greater. So if anything, you're accomplishing, it sounds like, what you would have wanted with the OpenGov solution. But more importantly, you're actually replacing a current system. So you're saving time to getting the best of the output.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That makes sense, yeah. So it's, I mean, it's internal efficiency. Okay, I appreciate that, because it, we, you know, we talked about OpenGov years ago, and I think only the first select one at the time, and maybe perhaps one or two other people actually logged into it. So it was disappointing that there wasn't any increased transparency. But, okay, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
In our experience, you know, transparency is one of those things everyone wants to do. It's really hard to implement, and the people who have most success with it are, they add, they add elements of transparency to something they're already doing rather than just doing something for transparency's sake. And this is adding transparency to something you're already doing. I'm happy to show the cap, and now we're going over time. I briefly just wanted to show this department page, because I think it addresses the question about, you know, what do the line items actually look like? So this is the Public Works Department page. Whether this is Excel, a Munis report powering this, doesn't really matter. The finance team can even invite the department in here to add their narratives, missions, goals, accomplishments. So it's totally not just saving, the finance team and Town Manager's Office, a ton of time in the input, but the collaboration with department heads, they're also gonna see a tremendous amount of value added in terms of time savings. Here's the budget by this department broken down by object. Here it is from a historical perspective. Here's the actual granular line item level details of all the different previous years, the upcoming budget years, et cetera, et cetera. Here's the major accomplishments, organizational charts, performance measures. I mean, government is service-oriented at the end of the day. Public Works is asking for a 5% increase to, you know, accomplish X, Y, and Z. When the next budget rolls around, you want to understand, you know, did they meet the goals they set? You know, you want to, you want to have that data communicated to you in an interactive format rather than maybe, you know, PDF file. From a capital perspective, I'll briefly go through this. Our capital budgeting software is built around a digital dashboard. And kinda similar to your guys' process, I saw it in your budget book. You have a bunch of forms that a department fills out to submit the capital project information, like the budget, the funding sources, and descriptions. Our software is also built around digital request forms. We're gonna give you a bunch of forms out of the box to get started with around GFOA best practices and different types of common capital improvement requests. You can totally customize our forms. You can use our forms. You can create your own forms. We have improvement forms, equipment forms, and a third bucket, other, if you have a other type of form that you want to collect data around. We're seeing a lot of clients using our software to collect data around Harper requests as an example. And you can absolutely have all those questions that you had on your form in our system and more. You have the ability to collect title, department, description from the department head. They have the ability to include images and supplemental attachments with that capital request. Think of that as an invoice or rendering a proposal. They can fill out the project cost-related with that capital request. They can tell you that it's, you know, $100,000 in '23, $50,000 in '24. That $100,000 in '23 can be broken down by engineering costs, materials, construction, et cetera. Show where the money is gonna come to fund this project. Totally customize what your funding sources are. You can separate out your capital one-time costs from your operational ongoing costs. You can reflect any revenue or cost savings generated by the project. The department can even show on a map where the project's taking place. They can highlight a street, draw an area, highlight, they can drop in a pin. There's also fields for internal notes. So if the finance team, the Town Manager's Office, wants to have their own notes there that are for their eyes only, separate from the department head, they can do that. Gives them a lot of flexibility. You can even show on a chronological graphic of the dates associated with the project. And when the department head fills out that form, your team is not gonna be looking at these requests as numbers in a spreadsheet or numbers on a paper form. You're gonna see them as a living, breathing project page brought to life that looks something like this. So it's a web-based presentation internally of those capital requests. And certainly throughout your capital planning process, you can come into here and continue to make adjustments to these forms, whether that's at the Town Manager level, the Board of Selectmen level, the Board of Finance level. Your team can have conversations with department heads. We have three layers of login permission here. Editors, which are gonna be probably the finance team, the Town Manager's Office, the administrators. Requesters are department heads. They can even give out reviewer access to everyone on, on the board, so you guys can see those requests. You can make comments on them, but they have those permissions to make sure that you guys don't mess around with any of the data accidentally. Once you've collected your requests, you can score the projects using a scorecard tool. So basically, how do these requests align with our strategic initiatives and goals as a community? You can set up a score, a custom scorecard based on your strategic goals and initiatives, and score your projects accordingly. You can even play around with the weighting of the criteria, so that if, you know, one criteria like legal outweighs, you know, the operational impact of the project, you can have all that set up in the system. You can even run a scenario around, around those different requests. So scenario A is if we adopt, you know, this group of projects using these funding sources. And, you know, scenario B is, you know, this group of projects with these funding sources, what those impacts would be. So you can really start to examine the different, you know, trends with the different possibilities in how you adopt your plan. There's a report builder in here to export the data out of the system. We have a bunch of different reports from a communication perspective, whether that be projects itemized by department, by funding source. We have reports in here for you to get the data into an accounting-style format for uploading to Munis, if that's something the town wants to do in the future. We even have this really nice one-page presentation report thing. This is like an Excel workbook you can download and print out and can play around with during meetings. And then if you're using both of the tools we've looked at, this module integrates with budget book. So the last thing I want to show is from a presentation perspective, in your budget document, what the capital budget could look like. So here's what.
Rob, can I ask you a quick question? I'm sorry, just back on, you pitched me on comments. So we're subject to FOIA. So how do our comments work with FOIA laws and disclosing to the public what we're saying?
You're saying the comments you're making internally in the system?
Yep.
So there's an email, secondary email kind of track of that as well. So anytime someone leaves a comment, there's like email information. So I think it'd be.
So Maria, would we be able to be compliant with FOIA requests? And if somebody wanted to see all of our comments around capital budget?
Where I think it would be somewhat problematic would be that if board members were commenting and essentially engaging in a discussion on those projects via an email dialogue or via the system. Because I think that one could argue that we were violating the quorum via essentially email or, it would be very similar to that. Where I think if it was just simply a Board of Selectmen member directly submitting a comment to staff with no dialogue, while that communication would still be FOI-able, we would not be necessarily, I think, I, I don't think in that circumstance we would be violating the conducting business via electronic means.
Sorry, we don't, we don't need to linger on this.
Yeah, Rob, why don't you wrap up, Rob, because we have a long agenda. But I just want you to be able to finish and.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm sorry for going over here. So the one-year capital budget, this is kind of the final encapsulation of everything funding broken down by department, by funding source, projects itemized out by department. This is the public-facing view. This is the document. So this is what everyone would see, what's posted on your website here, is your multi-year CIP, right? The Capital Improvement Plan. Funding broken down by departments, funding by source. Just like in your budget book, you had the form for each project. Now we have that in a web-based, interactive format that looks something like this. Here's the finalized version of the, of the project internally that's now presented externally in an interactive view of the charts and graphs and spreadsheets. And we see some clients who capital is a big deal for them. And they want to build maybe a comprehensive, what we would call a CIP book or a capital budget book. So here's kind of, you know, something created like a capital budget book with a capital budget message letter, you know, your capital planning process. Here's your, something like maybe the funding sources associated with those projects. So more of a canvas, but, I mean, this is basically a digital interactive, a true digital interactive CIP. And again, with each project itemized out by department with their own page for the viewer of this document to take a look. So that's everything else for the show today. I'm happy to answer any final questions before, before we wrap up.
Did you have a question? Any, so.
I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate it. It seems very transparent and user-friendly, so definitely something to think about.
And just always gonna say, as we move forward with our finance subcommittee, one of the potential future projects on that is getting involved in long-range capital planning. And this could be something that we start discussing in that, in that work group and see where we could go with that. Okay, Rob, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
See you at the convention. Bye. Okay. Okay, so next up is the First Selectmen's Report. A lot of what I have in here is gonna be discussed in agenda items. So I'm not gonna go into it in detail about rolling out the 501(c)(3) program. I did have a thank you in here to the Simsbury Performing Arts Center for hosting the Hartford Symphony during the month of July, which is a great series. And I would like to say the events are not possible without all the volunteers. We appreciate all the effort that goes into it. We're gonna talk about, there was a glitch in our email system over the last year, and I just wanted to include a, you know, a note on it to residents and apologize for not getting back to people, which we will talk about later on. The police work study that we funded in 2023, we did send out the RFQ. Is that correct? Yeah, so that's going out there, and there's a group of us that will be reviewing those when they come in. I wanted to send out an update to pickleball players that the construction is gonna be, supposedly gonna be targeted for May 2023. There's notes in here. We're also waiting on the Latimer Lane project estimates, which is happening right now, I guess, in the public building meeting that we're all missing, to see what the overage will be. And that will end up having to go to a tri-board meeting and also go to referendum, depending on the amount. And tomorrow is the primary for both registered Democrats and registered Republicans. This will be at your normal, normal voting location. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Good evening.
Oh, yeah, turn it over to Maria.
Good evening, everyone. Just quickly, I would like to know, under the coronavirus update, that the health district is still currently providing COVID vaccine appointments. They are doing those on Mondays and Fridays, depending on if a person is seeking either the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccination. That is for people ages 18 and older, so we've provided a link to folks who might like to have access to those clinics that they're running. And then for department news and notes, a lot of really just positive, positive news to share this week. So the pools are going to remain open this year, I'm sorry, the Simsbury Farms pools, until Tuesday, August 30th. So that's a little later in the season than normal, but right up until school resumes session. So really glad that they were able to offer and provide that service. Memorial Pool will close for the season on Saturday, August 13th. And we are still celebrating the 50th anniversary of Simsbury Farms this summer. Our events will be going through August. And we do want to highlight, this coming Friday evening, August 12th, we're doing a dive-in movie event at the Simsbury Farms pools. We will be showing Finding Nemo on a large movie screen. Folks can bring their own inflatables, enjoy the movie from the water or the deck. That will start, the movie will start at 7:30 PM, and it will be free admission to the pool after 7:00 PM. So I think that's just a really nice family event that, that we'll be providing that evening. On August 27th, that's going to be the grand finale event for the 50th anniversary celebration. We're going to have swimming, inflatables for children, live music. There'll be a concert at 6:00 PM. That's the 80s tribute band to Pop Rocks. And it's going to conclude at 8:00 PM with a fireworks display. So again, I think it's just gonna be a really wonderful, free community event for folks to enjoy and to celebrate the farms. And just another quick announcement, our fall recreation program signups are now taking place. So just really want to encourage folks to check out our simsburyrec.com website to see what's new. And from the library, we are continuing to have our book bike on its adventures throughout town. And there will be a trivia night at the Iron Horse Pub on August 10th. And if you would like to join the library's trivia team, we have provided a link for you to sign up for that. A quick reminder from Public Works, many folks have probably observed the milling work that has occurred along Hot Meadow, which is a state DOT project. They are anticipating to begin the paving portion of that project on August 14th through August 25th. They're also hoping to conduct that work overnight, so about 7:00 PM till 5:00 in the morning, to really try to do their best to minimize the disruption to traffic for us. And from Social Services, just a couple of quick reminders. So we are beginning to take applications for our back-to-school program for eligible families who live in the community. Gift cards and supplies will be available starting the week of August 22nd. So we really would encourage folks, if you think you might be eligible, have questions about the program, please don't hesitate to reach out to Social Services at 860-658-3283. And also just another reminder that we are accepting renters rebate applications, and you can also contact Social Services for that program. And this is a really, again, positive announcement. So we received our second-year allotment of our Youth Service Bureau grant funding. But in addition to our normal allotment, we received supplemental funding in the amount of just over $7,200. And we will be able to apply those additional funds to provide direct service work to our youth and families in town. And that will go towards things like intergenerational events and sensory-friendly programming. So some really positive news there. Also, from our Town Clerk's Office, you may recall that we did apply for a grant from the state of Connecticut to assist in our archiving processes. And we did receive notice that we have received that grant award in the amount of $7,500. That's going to help us bind the vital records in a way that is going to help preserve those records in a much-enhanced way. And that's for birth records from 1975 through 1999. So very grateful to the state for those funds that will allow us to do that work. And lastly, again, some more good news. We did receive from our insurance carrier, Kirma, and they are our insurance carrier for our LAP policy as well as our workers' compensation policy, a members' equity distribution check in the amount of $56,000, just over $56,000. We have provided how that will be applied to our town and Board of Ed LAP and work, work comp accounts. So again, that was based on our favorable experience as well as the overall health of the Kirma pool. So again, a lot of good news to share tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. So I'm gonna turn to my fellow board members to see who has any liaison or subcommittee reports for tonight.
I have a quick one.
Oh, sure.
I just want to make sure that residents are aware that the Simsbury Public Library is collecting books through mid-September, and this will go towards their book sale that they have annually. So, you know, I know there were, when I spoke with them last, they were saying their numbers were down on books. Clearly, I think it has to do with people traveling. But, you know, if we can just make it known, and if you have any books that you'd like to donate, that could really go towards helping that sale for them.
Sounds good.
I have a, I have a quick reminder that the Aging Well in Simsbury survey is still available. You can get that link online at the Senior Center website. And I believe that it has also been emailed out to people on the Senior Center mailing list. We have hard copies of it available also at the Senior Center and at the library. And we want to hear from residents, primarily that are 50 and over, about your concerns and input about aging in Simsbury as we continue to pursue our age-friendly designation through AARP. So that survey will be available for the next month. So we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Eric, Chris, John? Okay, all right, so we're gonna move on to Selectmen Action. First item up is the proposed naming rights criteria for Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. And I will let Maria provide some context here on what this is about.
Sure. So you may recall, in the spring of this year, the Board of Selectmen reconstituted the Naming Rights Committee. Eric and Sean volunteered to help with that effort. The purpose of that being to work with the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center Board of Directors for a potential policy that could be endorsed by this board in terms of naming rights to the facility. So they worked collaboratively. They have put together a proposal for your consideration this evening. I don't know if Eric or Sean, you had anything you would like to add to that?
Thanks, Maria. Yeah, the only thing I would add is that, you know, we already have a naming rights policy for the town. This just provides some extra, I think, guidance and clarification. So as the Performing Arts Center Board is approaching potential donors, it lessens the chance that they might bring something to us, and we say, no, I don't think that's an organization we want. So broadly speaking, you know, I think we're pretty aligned that, you know, we would not want alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, crypto, Performing Arts Center names. But beyond that, I think, you know, it would most likely be a company that we're all well familiar with.
I had a question. Does this get added to the policy? Because I was just trying to understand how in relation to the policy that exists today, if this is inserted somewhere? Is this an addendum to the policy?
I think the way I'm looking at it is, it's something that I hope that this board can align around so that, you know, for this particular fundraising effort that they're doing. So again, that they're, you know, when they do come to us with a donor, that we'll be in a good position to be able to accept that donor and that name.
And do we vote as a board on the name? That's what I thought I took away from the policy. Okay. The only thing I asked was, did anyone talk about politically affiliated or religious groups donating? Not that they would, but is that just not something that would ever happen?
We still want to attract people to the site.
Yeah. Okay.
And we actually put in somewhat of a minimum number for naming of the site overall, because we want to not do that very often, because you've seen from other places in Connecticut, if you change a name too many times, everybody forgets what it is. So you have to do this and expect to do it for a long time. And what we want is supporting grant for programming over a long period of time, stabilize our group, stabilize our ability to bring the things to town that we want to bring here.
So that was where I was, what my question was, there's a, there's a minimum buy-in that we got. This is, nobody, nobody else came in, so the $500 person gets to donate numbers. There's gonna be.
No, I think, I think we put $2.5 million in 10 years, but we're actually aiming higher. We will aim higher than that first.
And I just, I know there's a lot going on right now at the Performing Arts Center in terms of fundraising, and I just wanted to clarify where this fits in. This would not be for the structure that we're talking about in terms of the capital project, in terms of, you know, what we call Phase 2. This would be really looking long-term and creating a revenue stream for, for programming. And I think in some ways, making sure that the facility is inclusive to people who might not be able to buy tickets, among other things.
There's really two parts to the, to this. There's really two parts to the, to this supplement that we're talking about tonight. One is naming rooms. Naming rooms is frankly, we would want to do that for this construction project. We would want to be able to name rooms now to raise some money. We don't have a lot of rooms that we're building, so it's not a lot of money. The long-term, in terms of finding a big, a big commitment to put somebody's name on, on this facility for the long haul, if we had somebody on the line now, that would still take years, and it would take endless conversations and contracts and all kinds of stuff to, to close that deal. Because you really don't want to have Blockbuster Performing Arts Center in Simsbury. I mean, it's, it just doesn't work.
Right.
And that's, that's a really important point, Jeff, and that's right, what we talked about was, was how do we, how do we steward this facility, you know, for the next 10 or 15 years, right? And what, what we need to give to the PAC Board and to the potential donor is some level of assurance, Wendy, to your question, that if it follows these guidelines and it's within reasonable community standards, and obviously those shift as, as life goes on, that this is what we would approve, so that Jeff and team don't go out there and land $2.5 million and then we say no, right? So, you know, they, they need some level of assurance of us from today, but again, that can evolve, and if it needs to evolve, I think we need to continue to have conversations, you know, maybe $2.5 is too high and it needs to be two, right? And, you know, or, you know, Jeff, you know, has a different sense of the marketplace and he can land more, right? So there's, I think we need to be open to working with the PAC on this, but it was to provide them some structure so they could go out there and put a piece of paper down because of the unique nature of the facility and the PAC partnership.
It's also, when you talk about transparency, this was a big heads-up to you guys that we're even thinking about this, right? And, and, and we're really concerned with making sure that you know the things that we're thinking about, you know the things that we're planning, you know what our vision of the future is as much as, as much as we do, because surprise, nobody likes surprises, it's just not good. And, and we're.
We own it. We'll own it, right? It's a town property.
But we run it, but we run it for the, for the programming and customer experience, and that's where we need to spend our, our time. We need to get this construction behind us. We're not about construction, we're about content and user experience. And until we can get this done, this is a distraction for us, but we want to put this behind us, we just want to get, finish the building, and then talk about programming and customer experience. If you gave me a chance, I'll say programming and customer experience 100 more times.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, so I'm going to suggest we move effective August 8th, 2022, to approve the proposed naming rights criteria for the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center as presented.
I'll move that.
Thank you. Eric? And Sean seconded that? Did you second it?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that, that passes, there you go. Next up on the agenda is the referral for the, to the Planning Commission for CGS 824 for improvements to the Performing Arts Center. I'm going to turn this one over to Maria, because we have two items similar tonight on the 824s.
Yes, thank you. So you may recall that we typically address 824 referrals during our normal budgeting season, when we have sort of a project ready to go, that's part of the bond resolutions, et cetera. So we typically, again, do this during the budget season, and that's when the majority of our capital projects go before the Planning Commission. This is required by state statute. I appreciate it, I think George did a nice job, job on preparing the summary for you and showing the excerpt, the excerpt from the statute regarding this. So this particular project, as you may recall, Bond Council during budget season had advised, since the only technical secured funding we had in place was the $350,000, to do that for the, the restroom project. So the restroom component went before the Planning Commission for consistency with the plan of conservation and development, but as we're able to start taking more steps forward towards the expansion, that is technically a different, different project. So we just need to, under the statute, refer the ban shell expansion project to the Planning Commission, so they can determine if it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Okay. Move effective August 8th, 2022, to refer Performing Arts Center planned improvements to the Planning Commission for review and report under Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
I'll move.
Thank you. Heather seconded that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, now we have another one, very similar to that one. This is for the acquisition of 56 Woolcott Road. Is there anything you want to add to, to this one?
Yeah, thank you. So we did consult with Bob, he did recommend, just to err on the side of caution, that while you already did approve the purchase and sale agreement, to formally make the motion to make the referral to the Planning Commission as opposed to staff just, you know, providing that you all had, had approved the purchase and sale agreement. So again, this is really procedural, and this would be, again, for the Planning Commission to determine if that acquisition of land is consistent with our POCD.
Okay. Okay, so it suggests we move effective August 8th, 2022, to refer the acquisition of 56 Woolcott Road to the Planning Commission for review and report under Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. A second, anyone?
A second.
Eric seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so that also passes. Okay, next up is the tax refund request.
Hi, guys, thank you.
Thanks, guys, tonight.
Maria, do you want to add the, the handwritten, yeah?
Yes, thank you so much, thank you. Yes, so we did, this afternoon, we had a situation come to our attention regarding an elderly resident who had made an overpayment in their taxes while not provided to you in the original list. We've provided at your desk and will upload the revised attachment to the packet, but we would like to add a refund in the amount of $1,497.67 to Ms. Patricia Carbo, and the property address is 126 Hot Meadow Street 1B. So for the motion, the aggregate amount would increase from $105,556.54 to $107,000, $54, sorry, and 21 cents.
Okay, so I'm going to move effective August 8th, 2022, to approve the presented tax refunds with the revised amount and documentation in the emails dated today, in the amount of $107,054.21, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds.
So move.
Thank you. I'll second. Amber Beechoo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that, that's moved along. Now we're up to the ice rink, which probably people are wishing they were skating. The ice rink proposed fee increased, I don't know if Tom's, oh, there's Tom, hi, Tom. Did you want to talk about this, Maria?
That'd be great. Tom, you're up.
Sure, well, thank you, tonight, I mean, this is an annual thing we do every year. A few weeks ago at the Parks and Recreation Mission meeting, we, we had a lot of discussion on that, they actually voted, they actually, with the discussion, voted to lower some of the fees that I proposed, and now they've recommended those fees to lower. Certainly, we've had increases with minimum wage, things like propane on the, on the paddle tennis courts, it's gotten super expensive over the last year, and with the recently completed contracts for our maintenance staff and our professional administrative staff, certainly we're seeing increases there as well. So we tried, we tried to mitigate those increases as much as possible. I will note that the rink had its highest grossing revenue year last year at 254,000, so that, you know, we did sell a lot of ice time and skating lessons and make some revenue. But again, we do have some, some increases this year that we just can't control, so with that being said, we're looking to a $5 increase on a season pass, family, family pass for ice skating, but that's for the public skating sessions, the morning sessions, that people could take advantage of as well. Five, a $3 increase on individual pass. We're looking to raise skating lessons, $80, I'm sorry, $10 per session. And again, those are heavily involved with the minimum wage, with the kids in the rental, the rental skate room, and then starting to find the ice. And then modest minor increases on ice, ice time for residents and non-residents who rent the ice outside of U-Park, you know, for private parties, businesses, that kind of thing. Generally, the U-Park, Simsbury U-Park and Simsbury High School are the majority of the ice time that is sold during the season. Those rates, excuse me, not looking for an increase on those rates at this time. Then moving down to the paddle tennis and, the winter paddle tennis, again, the heating costs are going up over there, and the maintenance, and the maintenance staff who takes care of it, their fees are going up, so I think people need to understand, I think we're still competitive with the market, there's a high limit for those paddle tennis courts through the fall, winter, and spring season, when these rates are effective. Again, minor increases, and when you break it down, typically there's four people playing on those courts at a time, so it's, it's modest, it's a dollar, a dollar per person in over 20 minutes. Those who take the long-term rentals, the long-term season rental, for instance, in the evening is $625 up from six hundred and twenty last June. That 625 is split four ways over 20 times, so it's, it's minor. Those people who do book those long-term rentals in that evening are getting a subsidy, or they're a discount, I should say, over the, over the person who rents just once or twice. So I think a $25 increase there, I have proposed 50, or approve 25, I think a $25, a $25 increase is certainly understandable in these times. Any questions?
So you're basically saying the increases are really to cover additional costs, like for the most part?
Yeah, I mean, projected cost, projected cost with staff time and.
Yeah, and minimum, yeah.
We use propane in the ice, we use propane on the paddle.
Costs.
We do not have a control module on the paddle tennis court, people tend to put heat on, you know, it's, it's meant to make it less slippery when it's icy or in plumbing conditions. I think some of our users like to just put the heat on, you know, they, they, but it's not necessarily needed all the time, but we do go through a lot of propane up there.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so move effective August 8th, 2022, to approve the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Departments 22, 23 fee schedule for the Farm's ice rink and paddle tennis programs as presented.
So move.
Chris? Sean, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rates are now going to be in effect.
Good day.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, next item up is the proposed public gathering permit for a wedding at the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. Is Missy going to join us?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take this one. You know, typically, we will process most wedding events through just the administrative process. This was a little different, because this particular wedding event will also be holding fireworks as part of the wedding event. Our fire marshal, as you know, is part of the committee that reviews the application, signs off, et cetera. So at a staff level, we did complete all of our review, but again, I thought this was a little different in nature, just given the fact that there will be fireworks, so to err on the side of caution, staff thought we would bring this before the Board of Selectmen for review and consideration this evening.
Yeah, I actually was like, I, I'm not in agreement on having the fireworks for a wedding at the PAC, just because it will impact all the neighbors, just for someone's private wedding. I don't know, I'm sure I'm probably the only one that feels that way, but we hear enough complaints about people with the fireworks for town-wide celebrations and things like that, that, whatever, just voicing my opinion on that.
Well, I imagine we all can enjoy the fireworks from a distance.
How many, so? It's a 70, 70 people, person wedding, there's the, the map and everything, I mean, I looked at it, it looked like, kind of cool. Is that the first wedding that we're having at the PAC?
Do we have weddings?
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's, it's not as common. What we typically get requests for is use of the Flower Bridge, either for photos, ceremony, videos, those sorts of things. I would say that's usually our most common space, but we do from time to time occasionally get them for, as you know, Sean indicated, the PAC, you know, maybe another park for photos or something, but the Flower Bridge tends to be our most common location.
And I guess the other question, I know you have to have insurance and everything like that, as far as the safety with the fireworks and, you know, that security around the area, just because it's a wedding, so people aren't going to know it's the 4th of July and this is going on, is, is that all taken care of? I, I know the signatures are all here, but.
Yeah, so our full public safety team does review each and every public gathering permit, that includes a review by our police department, our fire department, and fire department typically, depending on, on the issue, not only the fire marshal, but the fire chief may also take a look at that, and our ambulance service also provides review as well.
Okay.
Is Missy on or not?
I think she hopped off.
Okay, so the, I, I have no problem with this, first of all, just educational, this is the first one I've ever, you know, ever heard of. But like, but afterwards, the, is it, does, is, does the PAC police, if you will, the, the tear, the take-down, removal, is to make sure that, you know, just like, just like a hike, you know, you, you take out what you brought in, kind of scenario, and it, and there's no, no, no damage, but no degradation to the grass or whichever? Is that the standard? And then is there a contract that's signed that if, I imagine that if there is something like that, then the, the holder is responsible for the cost to, to bring it back to the condition prior? Is that right?
That's correct. So the PAC does enter into contracts with their rental clients, and it does cover things like damage that they cause and restoration and things of that nature.
And I apologize if this was in the packet, what time are they targeting the fireworks for?
Oh my goodness, that's a great question, and I don't recall off the top of my head. Let me see real quick.
It says 9:30.
The description. We need to schedule this one, sir.
Does the application?
The fireworks go off at 9:30.
Thank you, guys, thank you. I did not recall off the top of my head, so I appreciate that.
Okay, no, thanks.
Okay.
Fire, we're supposed to off at 9:30, Eric?
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, so move.
Yeah, we got you, Sean.
Got it. Move effective August 8th, 2022, to approve the public gathering application for a private wedding being held at the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit for the event. Can I have a mo? Thanks, Sean.
Second.
Chris, all those in favor say aye.
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 That moves along. And we're getting into the steep grants on Station. So Maria, do you want to give the background on that grant and the upcoming changes?
Sure, absolutely, thank you. So we, excuse me, sorry, we recently, during the summer, received notice that the steep grant program was going to be accepting applications. While it used to be more of a regular occurrence in recent years, it's been much more sporadic. This is, I believe, only the second time during my tenure here that this program has been opened up and accepting applications. Typically, projects that support infrastructure, that support economic development are good candidates for this program. Our most recent steep application, we applied for funding to assist with the improvements that we made to the Performing Arts Center site for accessibility and parking. This particular project, you may recall, from our, our past Board of Selectmen goals and priorities and conversations, that there was an interest in converting Station Street back from one-way to two-way. From a little bit of research we've done, I believe that that probably occurred sometime in the 1950s to maybe early 1960s. There's not a lot of documentation on, on that. I mean, it was a very popular movement back at that time to try and convert a lot of streets to one-way, and the notion of that was like to move traffic quicker. And over time, it was found that that's actually a hindrance in many ways to economic development and businesses along those corridors. It is a narrow area, but we have done some preliminary work through Jeff Shea, who was previously here, and then Adam Kessler and Tom Roy have continued to work on that. We do believe that there would be an ability to convert that street back to two-way, provide some parking improvements along, along that area as well, some lighting improvements, et cetera. We're estimating that work to be about $160,000. So we are requesting permission from you this evening to move forward to submit that grant application. And if you do support that, the resolved and further resolved language is required, and there is a form that we would just need to fill out as part of our grant application.
Great, and was this, this is a CNR item, correct? Is it in the 2324 budget?
I would have to go back and.
I think I looked today, and I think that's where it was, I'm just kidding. It was one of the, I'm pretty sure it's next year. So it is something that we had planned to do, and that we, you know, the grant would be very helpful to get that done.
Has anybody spoken up, I know, I mean, we're in the butter one side, but has anybody spoken up against doing this?
No, in fact, we have had some conversations, and our Traffic Authority team, a little while back, did do a site visit with the owners of the Walden Hardware Building, and they had expressed an interest in us moving forward with this project.
So since we, yeah, so since we brought this into conversation three years ago, I think, we talked about this, so there hasn't, so it's continuing to move and, to be received favorably by all parties.
Thus far, thus far. I'm, I'm not aware at this point of any negative, you know, comments or concerns that we've received about the potential conversion.
So with converting it to two-way, you would lose the parking along the street, correct? And any sidewalk, or what?
Yep, so we will actually, as part of this, we've included for you that we are going to do our best to create some additional proposed on-street parking spaces. There will be a new sidewalk associated with this project. And then, again, just things such as the lighting, et cetera, will also be taken care of. So it'll really just sort of be a complete, like, revamp and overhaul of that street and the infrastructure along that street.
So you'd have to take sidewalk, there's no sidewalk to take from the north side, you'd have to take it from the Eno side, essentially?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right, right. And you may recall, we do also have the Eno parking lot project, budgeted as well, and this would really, I think, just be a nice enhancement to that entire, entire area.
Oh, that was going to be a question of how that would be incorporated.
And this diagram in here is very entertaining, the architectural drawing. Okay, any, anybody else have any questions? Okay, move effective August 8th, 2022 to authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to submit a 2022 Small Town Assistance Grant application for the Station Street one-way to two-way conversion. Resolve that Town Manager Maria Capriola be and hereby is authorized to accept on behalf of the town a 2022 Connecticut steep grant in the estimated amount of $160,000 for Station Street one-way to two-way conversion. And further, resolve that Town Manager Maria Capriola is hereby authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said 2022 steep grant with the state of Connecticut.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
Second.
Heather, second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Yeah.
You can read this.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it was pretty, that was the drawing I was talking about.
Looks like electronic schematic.
Right.
That's why Tom's smart.
He is smart. That's why he left, probably didn't want to explain it. The next item up is the supplemental appropriation, the LOTSIP and Connecticut Community Connectivity Grant for the Firetown Sidewalk, which has gone from West Street to Firetown. Talked about that quite a bit. And I will let Maria talk about that, because I don't see Tom here.
Yes, so Tom is doing double duty this evening with Public Building Committee. I know he had one comment that he wanted to share on this particular item. So if we could perhaps table this item and come back to it when he's able to come back to this meeting, that would be helpful.
Okay, so do we move to table the item, or do we just?
I think if there's consensus, we could just table it and come back.
Okay, everybody okay to move on?
Great, thank you.
Just remind me to come back to it. The next item is the, does he want this one tabled too?
Uh, this one, this one I can take.
Okay, this next one is the supplemental appropriation for the Hot Meadow Street Connectivity Project.
Correct. So you may recall, this was a grant that we were awarded previously. It's going to be a grant that supports the construction of the new sidewalk for, from the intersection of Hot Meadow and Hoskins up to the DOT garage slash commuter lot. So again, a really nice stretch of sidewalk, about a mile of sidewalk. It's going to fund the construction of that sidewalk. It was originally awarded and placed in our capital budget for fiscal 2122 in the amount of $810,000. Since that time, the state, because it is along a state roadway, they did ask for us to also, while we're working on this project, to make some improvements to other infrastructure, such as the drainage, et cetera. They will pay for that work. But then also, as we're seeing with many of our projects, the construction inflation did affect the bid, and the lowest responsible bid came in about 17% higher than what we had previously requested and been approved for. The grant program will cover that increased cost as well. So essentially, we are looking to increase the appropriation for this project to account for the additional grant revenue that we will be receiving. There is also one small local match being required of about just a little over $33,000. So we would be taking that from our sidewalk account and then increasing the appropriation as well. So the total appropriation would be just under $1.3 million. The only town funds going towards that $1.3 million is about $33,000. So again, I think this is a really, like, great, great story for us to tell, that we were successful in, you know, receiving these additional grant monies to make this project happen.
Can you just talk a bit about the Simsbury contribution that, so we have that $200,000 bonded sidewalk reconstruction pretty much every year in our CIP?
Yeah.
So this money, it comes out of that?
Right.
And it's, we can bond for this?
Yes, we did consult with Bond Council, and because there are components to this project with ADA ramps, et cetera, and that was part of that, that we can use the sidewalk funding to cover the local match.
Okay, great, great answer.
Yeah, it's good news.
Okay.
So Maria, just to be clear, the state money won't cover ADA costs?
Um, what we can do is that we can, it comes back to the bond language that we used. We used in some years cash to fund our sidewalk account, in other years, we used bonded money. So there's a combination of funds in that account. And just, again, I think to err on the side of caution, Amy consulted with our Bond Council, and she said that we could use that sidewalk account for the local match, based on the wording.
Okay. And this doesn't trigger referendum because we're not expending the triggerable amount because it's all coming in a grant form?
Right, and so, right, yep, and that this had gone previously, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
This is, this is covering a number of projects, right, is it?
This is specifically that new section of sidewalk that's going to be going in from Hoskins and Hot Meadow up to the DOT lot. So it's just that project.
Chris, we've talked about this one at least five times with different approvals, right, and the funding's changed, the site changed?
Yeah, so this is not the one where, okay, yeah, I'm just confusing, I'm just confusing it with the Firetown project.
Yes, that's the one we tabled, and we'll be circling that too.
That's tabled for now. Okay, so move effective August 8th, 2022 to authorize a supplemental appropriation of the LOTSIP grant for the Hot Meadow Sidewalk Project in the amount of $455,447.39 to transfer the town contribution in the amount of $33,524.28 from the Sidewalk Reconstruction Capital Project for a total appropriation amount of $1.298,971.67, and refer this appropriation to the Board of Finance for approval.
Move that.
Amber, Amber, I don't know, you guys are tied. So gonna give it to Amber, because she's sitting right next to me. You can have the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
That moves along. Get rid of this page. Okay, the next item is the vacation carryover requests. And Maria, I know you can just weigh in on this one, too. We've had these before, for people new to the board.
Sure, exactly. So this is procedural. This is, you may recall, sort of the old method that we had for the vacation carryover and forfeiture system. With the exception of our police union, all of our other collective bargaining units have moved to a simplified process. Just in terms of where we were negotiating the police contract, we have not yet been able to do that in terms of, again, where we are in their success or collective bargaining agreements. So they still have the carryover date of July 1st. And, goodness, I apologize, I'm sorry, there was a typo in the packet. It would be effective tonight's, tonight's date. And essentially, we have three staff members who are in the IBPO union that, due to some approved leaves of absences, they are seeking a balance, a small balance carry forward. As in past years, we're recommending that the vacation days must be used honor before December 31st. And should they leave for any reason prior to that, they will not be reimbursed for those excess days, should they not use them.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, so move effective August 8th, 2022 to approve the vacation carryover requests as presented in the table below and requiring selectmen action. Further stipulate that the approved excess vacation days must be used honor before December 31st, 2022. Right? Any unused approved excess vacation days still on the books as of January 1st, 2023 will be forfeited. Should the employee leave service for any reason, including but not limited to retirement or resignation, they will not be paid out for the approved unused excess vacation days authorized by the Board of Selectmen.
I'll move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Vacation approved. Okay, the next one, I'm gonna weigh in on this one. Melissa, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so this is the rollout of the COVID-19 Relief 501(c)(3) nonprofit program that many of us have been involved in. I'm gonna give a little history that Sean started the ARPA work group, dragged me into it last year when we were under the interim final rule, where we started meeting on ARPA and trying to figure out what to do with the money, which was really hard to use at that point in time. Jackie Batos was a selectman at the time and was on the committee. This was a proposed idea, was to fund the nonprofits and to give some money back into the community for COVID relief or for work done in response to the COVID pandemic. Fast forward to 2022, when the final rule came out, not that it's really relevant here, but we transitioned into using our finance subcommittee, which is made up of Heather Gatz and Amber Obual and myself, along with Melissa and Amy, and we continued this project and decided to keep moving forward with this project. And we got the funding approved a couple meetings ago, I believe, and this is just the work that we promised that we would do when we finally rolled it out, was include criteria, a cleaned-up application with all the specifics in there, a letter attached that the people have to sign onto, and ethics agreements and things like that. And then Melissa has put together a nice rollout media plan, and also there's a description of the timeline here. This is not a first come, first served, just so if nobody's panicking that I have to hit enter tonight. You have until September 16th to get the applications in. We're gonna bundle them together and review them. And there's criteria in the package that was from West Hartford that Heather actually wanted to have included. That kind of gives a way for us to look at it with some objectivity and ranking. So I'm gonna see if anybody here would like to add to what I've said on this, or if that's, anybody has questions? Otherwise, we're ready to go with this program and very happy to get it going. So, okay. I had to move effective August 8th, 2022 to approve the 501(c)(3) nonprofit grant program application and the related materials as presented.
So moved.
Amber?
A second.
And Heather, second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is done. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. Okay, so look, look for, look in your inbox tomorrow for the information and on the website. Okay, the next item is the Board of Selectmen website submission, kind of omission issue. And basically, I'm just gonna say, you know, a few of us were asking to have this on the agenda tonight, and as any technical issue, the best news that you can hear for anything, you don't care what happened before, is that it's been resolved and fixed as a IT person. So I'm not sure if Maria and Melissa want to address this at all, or do you, you want to talk about what happened, or?
Um, do you want to, oh, maybe I'll let Melissa start, just because she supervises IT, and then I can.
Yeah, I can address it, too. It's not very technical, but if you want.
I mean, it's exactly as described in the packet. You know, this was an issue that we discovered that initiated from when we migrated from our onsite email server to Microsoft's 365, which is a cloud-based service. So we inherited certain security features that were defaults on the system, one of which prevented external accounts from emailing an internal kind of group contact, which is what the Contact All button on your web page is set up as. So this only impacted that particular mechanism. It did not impact any direct emails, internal or external, to you all as a group or you all as individuals. So as soon as we discovered it, it was a very quick fix, so.
Can I ask you, so when, you know, this went for a very long time, and, you know, I guess my question is, why did it go for so long? You know, what kind of system do we have in place when, you know, when you made this transition, you know, was testing and certain things, did that not take place to check on this? And are there any changes being made in how you operate going forward?
I can't speak to sort of the testing. That would be for Rick, and unfortunately, he's on vacation today. But, you know, that, we did not receive, it was not set up in a way that we would have received any sort of bounce back, or the individuals that submitted messages would have gotten bounce back. So unfortunately, there was really no way to catch it until we sort of proactively went out and were looking for something, and that's when it was discovered, sort of, sort of stumbled upon, as opposed to something that was proactive. So I can't really speak to how the specific features of 365, how we would have tested them. That would be a question for Rick, which.
Okay, but basically, the emails got, when you moved to the cloud, the emails, there was a setting, the emails that were coming from that source got blocked, and they, we didn't get them. But you were able to recover all of them, which is a good news.
They were all there.
So I do have a question. I know you guys have gone through them and addressed a bunch of them, and it said people reaching out to the Town Manager's Office. But my concern is, I went through them today again, and there was many in there that were about the ADU opt-out, multiple things, you know, the T-Ville connection that we were talking about at the board that we didn't hear at the time that that was happening, the gun range, the SVAA, AD, you know, that kind of stuff. Are, I kind of asked, is there a list of email addresses that I'd be happy to send an apology to, that we did not respond to them in a timely basis, and that if the email is still relevant, you know, we'll address that? I'm not sure, I know you guys have addressed a bunch of emails, but did somebody address all the ones that came to us that looked like we did not respond to them?
Sure. So I think, you know, as mentioned in the summary of submission, there were approximately 10 emails that we thought perhaps could still require a response, meaning that they were looking maybe for a piece of information, had a question, and we weren't sure if that had made it through other channels. So we did reach out to those particular emails to let them know that we had experienced this technology glitch and provided them with the requested information. As Melissa mentioned, again, as we were doing part of, part of this review, oftentimes, folks, in addition to reaching out to the Board of Selectmen, they will also reach out to the Town Manager's Office. So a number of the folks who were, again, searching for information had been addressed that way. And then we do have a list of, again, we sent you the emails that were part of this. We sent those to you. I know you have, you know, you have those, you have the email addresses, but we do also have an Excel list of those emails as well.
Oh, you do? Okay, because I personally would like to send an apology. I saw one from somebody asking one of us to go to his Eagle Scout project back in August, and I'm.
That one we did follow up on.
Oh, you did?
And Eric, at the time, had been in contact with that individual.
I think they got me in a different way.
Remember, he actually shared the fact that that was occurring, I think.
Really? I just searched my inbox, that's why I'm asking, bringing it up.
I just, you know, obviously, it was, you know, this was unfortunate that it occurred, but, you know, I just really wanted to appreciate and commend you on the transparency and how quickly you raised the issue and resolved it. You brought it to us quickly, and I think that says a lot about Maria, the culture that you've established in your office around openness and transparency, and I appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
And I'm sure, I'm certain that any of them that, if you had heard, you would have heard, certainly Maria, I think it would have been circulated to us as well if somebody had expressed loudly a concern that there hadn't been a response from the town.
Yeah.
I think you have, we have your level of trust in that, so.
People aren't generally shy about that, you know, if they have a concern. Like I said, in addition to, you know, often emailing you all, they'll, you know, email my office, they'll stop by in person, they'll give us a call. And so, again, as we were working through that list, we were like, oh, yeah, we were able to take care of that question, we were able to take care of that concern. There were, as I mentioned, quite a few that had already been addressed previously.
I actually think otherwise with the transparency, because, one, these letters were addressed to us, and the fact this wasn't being added as an agenda item on top of it, the Technology Task Force met on Monday, and this wasn't even brought up to them at all. And I think there is a transparency issue in that, actually.
Who's the transparency with? Us or the town? Because we, the leadership of the town shared with us that this occurred. So that, to me, is being transparent, and that the fact they responded, so.
Right, but there are 84 residents who reached out to their elected officials and didn't get a response. And it's fine that they then went to the Town Manager's Office, some did. But when this was communicated to us last, well, Thursday, July 28th, our Technology Task Force met four days later, it was never brought up to them at all. And on top of it, it wasn't added to our agenda when these are residents. This is a public concern. It should be addressed out to these residents to understand that they weren't being ignored by us. And I thought it was quite dismissive and a little flippant to just say, oh, we took care of it. Well, they were addressed to us. And so that's where my concern lies.
Yeah, I would just weigh in on that.
Hold on, procedurally, hold on. Wendy and the board set the agenda, Heather, so it was added to the agenda, so I disagree with your point.
At my request, it wasn't, it should have been already just added as this. It wasn't, it should have been already just added as this.
Well, again, perhaps you don't understand how this meeting works.
She does.
The first selectwoman sets the agenda.
I can.
Your recommendations lead by the town manager.
You froze. I can explain what happened. We received the.
What?
I'll be happy to just explain the scenario. We received the information from Melissa. You're freezing. So I would let you speak if you were not frozen.
To the agenda.
So he's gone now. So we heard about it last, last week. I did ask if, how we were resolving it. Melissa did address that. Did ask for a list of the emails. I had agenda prep on Monday. I did not have the foresight to think that I would put that on the agenda. Heather reached out to me and said that she thought it should be an agenda item, and since I was within the window of me adding to the agenda, we asked to have it put on the agenda. Subsequently, Maria sent out that full explanation email saying that it may not warrant being on the agenda, but shared all the information to what happened and how the issue happened after that. And that at that point, we did push back a little bit and, and ask to have it on the agenda, which is why we're talking about it tonight.
Which is, which is the transparency occurring.
Exactly. So, so now it's, now it's transparent.
But it was, but I disagree that it wasn't transparent before, because this is the forum where it becomes.
It is now.
Transparent.
It wasn't, it wasn't going to be transparent, but it is transparent because we asked for it to be transparent.
When you say it wasn't going to be transparent, I object, Wendy. You set the agenda. The town staff can push back on any item you want. You are the chairwoman of our meeting.
So it's on the agenda.
You have the final say on this agenda.
I know. It's on the, it's on there, Sean.
So I object to both of your characterization that town staff in any way prohibited agenda items. It's your decision.
And it's, it's on there now.
And, and I applaud, I applaud Heather for, for putting it on, creating the transparency. So I don't, I.
No, just also with it, with it not even being mentioned at all to the Technology Task Force, because.
This is not a Technology Task Force item. That's, that's to look at our technology, you know, hardware, software needs, not, not to address an email issue that was an honest mistake on an integration through a cloud server that won't happen again unless we migrate to another server.
And I understand it was an honest mistake. It just, I.
So here's.
I'm like differently on the transparency.
And here's what I'm going to say is, for me, all the emails that I got through the email server, I like to respond to whether they require me to say anything back to them or not. So if I can have the email address, and even though people have, if you can tell me which ones you've responded to and that these people know that there was an issue and that was why we didn't respond to them for however long, that's great. I would like to personally send an email to the others and just say, there was an issue, and I apologize for the board not responding to your email in a timely manner. That, that's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It does.
Yeah. But I just, I want to make sure that if I was, if I was watching this meeting right now, I would be, I would hear to, I, myself, not the public, myself, I would hear that, that there, since this was uncovered, that there was not an effort to make it known that this occurred. That was what I, that's what I would be hearing, that there was a lack of transparency. There's, there's, there's a statement being that there's been a lack of transparency in the fact that as if we were trying to not reveal and admit something occurred. And that is not the way that I see this has unfolding. It's absolutely imperfect. Could you rewrite how this occurred? Of course you can. But that's, you can say that about anything. But I applaud Heather for pushing it forward to make it transparent. I also applaud town staff for bringing it as quickly as they did to us and then left it up to us to carry forward how we individually would address the, the revelation and the communications. I applaud you, Wendy, for wanting to push forward and continuing to, to, to address each individual on their own. But I just want to make sure that, to me, I don't think there, we have to be clear that we use a lack of transparency as if we have tried to deal with this in any other way than bringing it to light and then moving, and then each individual can address it as they will.
Okay. I have one small question about this, that because this was emails that was to us as a group, like typically, we would not all, I mean, would we all individually respond to each, I mean, we don't do that. I mean, I guess it seems like there is some, I think of it as like a notification and then following up to make sure that somebody has addressed it, but.
I respond individually, and I don't know if it came from the, to all of us or to me individually. I just respond. I don't know if there's a way to tell.
But these emails, that was the whole point, was that these ones got hung up because they came to us as a, as a group. And typically, in our protocol of not all chiming in on group emails and creating a meeting, it is, it is common for us to, I think, kind of find out who's taking the lead on it. So I don't, I guess I'm just kind of thinking out loud, like if people do email us as a group, you typically would not hear back from six people, from all, from each of us, right? Because on, on an email, we.
Do we get it as an email to six people? I thought we got it as an individual email to each address. That's how it looks.
We got it the way I responded to the tax email the other day that you were all on, I believe.
I think what's most important is that going forward.
The point is, is that a mistake was made, it was identified, town staff immediately notified us. So I agree, there was, there was 100% transparency. There was a discussion and ultimately a decision by the person that owns this meeting to add it to the agenda. Here it is from a notification standpoint. And staff spent, it sounds like a lot of time making sure that our constituents were respected and responded to. And Wendy, you're going to finish that off with, sorry, this happened. And I think that all makes a lot of sense for an honest mistake.
I think also it's really important to make sure that we don't have an honest mistake that it is go for over a year without being discovered. You know, I think something needs to be done when we, when, when things change to make sure we have proper protocols in place with testing the system and testing the changes, because it just, it's a very long time for, for that to have gone unrecognized.
Yeah, I agree, but it also tells me that the public was not up in arms, because we would have heard about it.
Which is what I.
People felt like we're ignoring them, because they fined us.
Yeah. And we, and that's, that's why I raised that question, Heather, as well, if, I think, if there was something of significance, you would have, if somebody had said, I'm not getting a response. And I think when someone, I think, I think, a public culture exists in your office that we've got, we have a customer, we have a, we have a citizen in that who really wants a response from the board collectively on an issue, we need to address this. And that's happened in the past, because we, this system is new. This system is new. And from our time on the board, we did, there's, there's not a, there's not an avalanche of communications coming in. So it, it's not, when I looked at the time and then the number of submissions, it's not as if it is out of sync with what occurred four years ago or five years ago.
In most of these, we had seen, I mean, the vast majority of these emails through other, other means as well, through public audience, through individual emails, because it seems like if people reached out individually, like to Wendy or to one of us, then those emails we were all getting. It was just the group function.
It's just the Contact All.
Right.
And there are other means, which obviously people use.
Right, right.
So I did, I did search on a bunch of them today to see if I had anything in my inbox from some of these people, and I did not, to see if I had responded to them in another way, which is why I would like to respond to them now. So, so I will take the lead on that, and, and let's just move on with that. And I will be much more careful, Sean, on any items that need to be transparent, to bring them and make sure that they're, they're on the agenda for everyone to hear. So.
Yeah, no, and, yeah.
Okay. Let's move on. Okay. The next item up is our Board of Selectmen goals.
Oh, actually, Tom was able to.
Oh, Tom's back?
Yeah, if we could just take care of the Lotsip Grant and the Community Connectivity Grant.
Okay, where's Tom? Oh, Tom! I was looking up there for you.
I was down the hall due to the public building committee.
How did that go?
It was all right.
Which one did, which one was first up?
We're on the, and we did one already.
Take care of the North End sidewalk. We just need to cover the Firetown one that you had the comment that you wanted to share.
Yes, the Firetown Road sidewalk, which I know we've put in a couple of different grant requests over the last few years. And in a way, we have a Embarrassment of Riches, where we received both the Lotsip Grant and the Connecticut Community Connectivity Grant, which is issued by Connecticut DOT. Both grant awarding agencies, the Capital Region Council of Governments and Connecticut DOT have been very understanding to this unusual situation. We've broken the project up in such a way that they can both feel quite confident that they're getting a good value out of the grant. And if we are able to approve this supplemental appropriation, we will send this out for survey. Then we are going to do in-house design and hopefully will be in construction next summer. There was one quick correction on the requested action in the motion. In there, it looks for a Lotsip Grant in the amount of 1.369 million. That is actually only 1.2 million. And that was from Capital Region Council of Governments, limited how much money they would pay to a standalone sidewalk project. And that changes the final value of the total project from 1.998 million to $1,829,000.
On a project like this, what's the timeline on notifying, you know, a butters that this is happening? I know there's a lot of interest around this.
We are probably going to start that process in the next two weeks. Certainly, our goal would be to have notification out prior to any surveying work going out. There has been a little bit of attention on this project from both these Board of Selectmen meetings and also our Bike Pet Advisory folks have definitely put this out on Facebook. The main butter that we need to have a good conversation with is the Country Club. This is going to be along one of their fairways. We want to make sure that this looks like a sidewalk and does not look like a cart path. The nice.
That's really funny.
The night, the nice thing is, with this little bit of extra money, we're hoping to add some additional landscaping things to really help distinguish this. And I think in our very early conversations with Hot Meadow Country Club, their concern was protecting anybody on that sidewalk from somebody who may slice it hard to the left. I guess, no, actually, that's a hook.
I hit that, I hit the guardrail on Saturday.
Peterson's on the first.
I hit the guardrail Saturday. That's a very true story.
So we're going to have to put a couple hemlock trees there with Chris Peterson's name on them.
That's legit, yeah.
Yeah, so it's something that we always want to make sure that they're involved in, and we did have early conversations with them about two years ago, and we were first looking at this as a project, so now's the time we want to go back. And whether, one of the big things is whether or not we separate the different grades with retaining laws or whether we're able to do that, sloping that, and we would need to acquire what's called grading rights to allow us to change the grade for them. But it would allow for a much more natural looking setup. And again, we would cover it appropriately with plantings and things that would look good for the golf course and would look nice for the folks on Firetown Road.
Tom, I, this, I'm going to, I have a question, something else, but go ahead pertaining to this, but does anybody else have a question on this? The section of, of paving that goes from in front of the Congressional Church, from First Church, Hot Meadow up, and then to, it's wider. It looks like a bike, I don't know what it looks like, I don't know how to describe it.
It's a bike path.
But it, so then it trans, then the crosswalk transitions over Firetown to, is it the same?
It continues.
It does that wide?
Yep. That's actually considered, that is the Farmington River Loop Trail.
Okay, so then it gets up to West Street, I mean, further West Street, that's where it converts back down to a sidewalk near the high school, near the high school.
Yeah, and, and the goal would be that trail users, cyclists and runners and such that were looking to do the trail, would cross using the crosswalk and pedestrian crossing signals at the Bushy Hill West Street intersection and then go into that section of trail that we refurbished about three years ago, where the wood chips and the sign are. One of the things that the Connecticut DOT did is they eliminated the crosswalk by the high school, because that's something they call a mid-block crosswalk, which they have historically found to be less safe than crosswalks at intersections. It's a challenge, because people still tend to cross where they want to cross, but certainly that's why that crosswalk was eliminated. The other challenge with that, from time to time, we do certainly have business owners that are on the south side of the street questioning why Parks and Rec is removing the snow from the sidewalk on the other side, but not on their side.
Because the grass also got very high between the road and the sidewalk. We heard about, we heard some complaints about that.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
Sorry I missed this the first time through.
I know, we missed you.
Busy tonight.
Okay, so move effective August 8th, 2022 to authorize a supplemental appropriation of the Firetown Road Sidewalk Lotsip Grant in the amount of 1.2 million dollars and of the CCCGP grant in the amount of 594K and to transfer the town contribution in the amount of $35,000 from the Sidewalk Reconstruction Capital Project for a total appropriation amount of 1,829 million and refer this appropriation to the Board of Finance for approval. Further, move to create a capital project to complete this work. Further, move to refer the Firetown Road Sidewalk Gap Closure Project to the Planning Commission for Review and Report under Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks. Tom, have a good night, going home. Okay, so the next two items, well, we have our Board of Selectmen goals and then the town manager goals, and then we do have some other items on here. So I'm not sure how we want to kick this off tonight, but the last time we did the goals, we decided that the number system, the ranking system that we used, we decided we would come back and kind of take what we had before and transfer it into a more high, medium, low, or not on the list model to make it easier than dealing with points. And then we can look at, you know, who, how many had highs and things like that. I'm not sure if we're going to share that on the screen. And if we, obviously, is everybody still up for our conversation on our goals tonight? Keep going. Just making sure.
Is that, you want that up on the screen?
Yeah, I think we need it on the screen.
Hard to see.
So as the goal facilitators, what do you, how do you guys want to go through this? I mean, we have a definite, now we have full, full agreement on the top one, so that there are some changes in here that I noticed. But the top goal of the board right now is to engage in long-range capital planning between the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Ed, and then incorporate the Town Facilities Master Plan results. So there's a lot of other items in here, too, that relate to capital items on different master plans, which are ranked at different levels of agreement, but which, in my opinion, all kind of fall under that whole capital, long-range planning. So I don't want to be the only one talking here, so if somebody else wants to.
Well, I guess my, my question is being first time through this, how do we take, you know, out, obviously, the top one, everyone had a high, but there are a few where there are four or three highs. And then, you know, after that, how many, how many goals exactly do we narrow it down to and where do, how do we take it from here so that we can move along in terms of also the, just what our policy is over the next two years, what we're focusing on, and, and obviously helping with, with the policy portion of Maria's goals next, because she has some Board of Selectmen goals adopted from 2021. You know, some of those, when you look at those, to looking at what we allocated for them, maybe no longer makes sense, or the, her high, medium, low, those that pertain to policy don't make sense. So I think, you know, we really, I just am asking how that usually works from just kind of solidifying what, how we are prioritizing from here to have our policy as a board.
Good question.
Some people have already been involved.
Yeah, if I could jump in. So, you know, I think my advice to, to the board in terms of this work typically, you know, in terms of trying to whittle this, this list down a bit. know, in terms of trying to whittle this, this list down a bit, to focus on as much as you can, items that are policy in nature, community vision in nature, right? So the job of the board is to set policy, to set community vision, whereas the role of staff is to implement that vision. So typically in the past, what the boards have done, again, it's a much, much shorter list from the Board of Selectmen, they try to, again, narrow it down based on capacity, something that's a little more manageable, but again, something that's more policy-focused, community vision-focused. Then typically what we'll do is take from that policy vision, that community vision, and we will think about organizational needs and priorities. And again, then my, my work plan, essentially my work plan, then the work plan for the organization, again, is more project-oriented, more administration-related, more, again, projects associated with implementation. So kind of thinking about this as different things is that the Board of Selectmen's list, again, typically has been more policy-oriented versus the manager's goals and work plan being more organizational-focused, more project-based to implement that vision. And I think maybe perhaps moving forward, as you're, again, perhaps maybe scaling down this list, I would say that the list as it's currently structured is probably the largest list we've seen, you know, and again, from a capacity standpoint, I think it's probably a bit overwhelming. But again, I think that in this list, there are kind of a mix of policy, but also organizational. So kind of trying to think about that and probably pulling out organizational and thinking about organizational sort of priorities and goals within the framework of my goals as opposed to your policy vision. I hope that maybe helps with just some overall, you know, direction for your conversation this evening.
From a practical standpoint, we have to cut, we have to cut this list down.
Well, we could, there's things we could just get rid of in here that look like most people have lows or nos.
But there's also, to that point, when there's, there's, so there's a lot of, there's been discussion amongst us, some of us, it's like a chicken, chicken and the egg, right? Okay, well, we, our goals versus Maria's goals, which comes, which sets first, we know, which basis set foundationally. I would ask, and I don't know if it's possible, and just to reiterate what Maria maybe just said, is that, that what they believe to be the core functions of existing functions that are already being executed to some level of these, you take the narrative and say, we're already doing this, okay? So it's not, so it's not being dismissive of a particular individuals on this panel's request or need or, or a goal, whichever it is, but makes, tells us that it's either being, you believe it's being addressed or not being addressed. Again, whether it's policy or it's procedure. And then there's other, Wendy, to your point, I think there is, and I appreciate Wendy, that both you and I think it was Heather, maybe Amber, I don't want to short Amber. Where there are nos or lows, it's kind, some of it's kind of graphic as to say we're being dismissive, like that's actually not important. But I appreciate that, for example, support the work of the Pollinator Pathways Initiatives, we're saying low, no. It's being done, it's being done, and it's being done aggressively, but either already it's being done or it's being, it's being addressed by another organization relative to us. Same thing with provide mental health services and resources to the community, you know, moderate to low. If anybody sees this and just is driving by, and says, what kind of town is this? This is a horrible town, right? But we're aggressively, aggressively supporting those concerns and other aspects of our, of our, of our town and other services. So I saw my sermon's over, in the sense that you either, I think, take a cut at this and say, this is already being, this already has been addressed, or it is being addressed because it's funded, it is an ongoing service expectation, or it's part of my goal, or it's being addressed by someone else, so that we can then, and maybe that helps, I hate to keep kicking this down the road, maybe that naturally condenses this absurdly long list, which is completely unfair and unpractical.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that. We could definitely at a staff level.
All right, Sean, go ahead. Yeah.
I also think there are, and you can also look, there are maybe, you know, eight that have, where most, or to all board members have higher, medium.
Yep, okay, yep.
You know, and that's another way to also pull those out.
Yeah, I do think that it is a fair point that Chris just said that saying no, even though we said no to things on here, it didn't mean that it was no, this isn't important. It was that it was, no, I think this is already being addressed, or no, I don't think this is maybe a Board of Selectmen policy goal. It would be an operation, it would fit on another, like on the Maria's list of goals operationally. So I think we just want to make sure that when people see this, that they don't misinterpret it as like it meant not important at all.
Well, that's why I have low for DEI initiatives, obviously, that's a key thing. But to me, it's not a goal, it's, it's pretty much like a mission statement.
Expectation.
So it's, it's supposed to be in everything that we do, there's not, you know, we funded the DEI council to do their data study, so we've done, taken action, but to say that's our goal for DEI, that what can you, what can you materialize out of that? It's just how we want to operate in our day-to-day activities. Then the same with the ARPA funding, I put no for the ARPA funding, and I've been spending over a year on it, but I feel like that ARPA, this is, it's pretty much operational now because we are using it as part of our budget process. We've done a few projects that we've done. I don't see it as a call-out high item at this point in time. That's, that's my, my thoughts on that. And again, getting back to some items on here could easily just come right off the list. Like you said, the pathways, we've donated money, that's, that's operationalized now. I don't see anything happening.
We've not donated any money.
Maybe that was a topic earlier.
But, I'm sorry, the town, we gave money in the budget process to the town to, to use for pathways throughout Parks and Rec.
Right.
Yes. So we didn't, the budget was allocated that money. So we have made that part of our budget for the next three years, and I don't see what other items that would be in here to support it at another funding level. So it's already in motion. I don't see it as a goal over the next two years, at least for me, that I'm going to do another step in that process. Let the next board do that, if there's another action to be taken. The, if you look at the, the developed vegetation management and stewardship, that's pretty much all, oh, there's a couple M's, sorry, I didn't mean to, like ever, I'm not sure even what that means, which is why I gave it a no. So, but I'm gonna, I'm just, I guess we can all say things that we think. So I, to me, the, the big important items are the financial management, this long-range capital planning. I also would like to see, I think, just me, Heather, and Amber, you know, some of us did improve that budget process that we have, you know, go for the GFOA best practices, which I hear at every Board of Finance meeting from our Finance Chair, make sure that the budget is clear to the, to the town. But, you know, obviously, that's not everybody's top priority here. The mental health services, we are doing that, we've just funded as a board the positions to improve the people going forward. So I, I think that's kind of an overarching strategy that we want to maintain, public health and well-being, you know, it's not a necessarily a goal item again, because we have funded it.
I guess one of the reasons why I continue.
Guys, we can, guys, we can talk ourselves in circle for 16 meetings.
So what do you, what do you want to do?
Five meetings, five meetings on this. We need to start cutting some stuff here and getting some consensus on whatever, six to 10 items that we can all, as a board collectively, compromise on to be kind of our guiding principles for what we're going to pay for, what we're going to ask town staff to pay attention to, and what we're going to talk about. So I, you're all saying the right things, but we've got to make some decisions and set some direction here. So again, you know, no disrespect to exploring additional affordable opportunities for housing needs to go. There are three nos on there, which means if we voted on it, it's not going to make the list.
Okay, so Sean, can I ask you that, can I ask you that? I agree that, my ask, which does sound like this is, I'm asking to continue to spiral this thing out, though, is my ask, though, is to push, kick this back to town staff to, to naturally cull, help us cull this by the lows go, okay, that's the first way. So they, this goes, Sean, like you're saying, the lows go, they're gone. But assist us with some of them that might be highs or mediums that you can say are already being done, right? Versus us saying, get rid of it, but we don't, get rid of it or do it, and it's already being done, or it's, and then actually, if it's already being done, you think completely by you, then it doesn't become an item for us, it's just a duplicative item on there. So there, so it actually takes the position of something else that could be on there. So that's my ask.
I really disagree with you, but my challenge is, I think we've all got a different perspective, and I'm not sure that really gives town staff any direction, and I'm speaking for them, and they can certainly answer, but like, so we're not a diverse and inclusive community yet, we are on the path. So to me, deprioritizing that and saying we're done, I think is, is a mistake.
I didn't say done.
Right, so we can either say it's a priority and we're going to continue to review policies and procedures and continue to fund the DEI council, and if we don't want to do that, that's okay. But again, that was a goal from a strategic standpoint, that we wanted to invest in that effort from prior boards. So we have a decision to make on whether we want to do that. Mental health, we are piloting, right, those additional social service workers, right? And are we going to continue that? We're gathering data. Do we want to make that a priority or not? We don't, we don't have to. But again, you know, we've got to make some decisions here on what's truly off the list, Chris. And then whatever's left to quibble about at the end, we either compromise or we vote. I mean, we, it's, these are our goals, not town staff to do our prioritization.
Could I, could I jump in? And please correct me if I'm wrong, but what I think I was hearing from Chris, which we could assist with this task if there's an interest from, from the board, is in addition to sort of identifying what is currently being tackled, again, sort of helping to navigate policy versus implementation. So I think a good example is, for example, if, you know, us working, again, as, as a community towards being a more diverse, equitable, inclusive community, if that is an important policy goal of this board, if that is an important vision of this board, right, that, that would be a very appropriate goal for you all. And then how we accomplish that through implementation, right? Those are items that would then show up on the Town Manager's Goals, such as the data project that you funded, right? We're getting to a point, we're getting close to issuing an RFQ, that's obviously something that Melissa and I are going to be very involved in in the upcoming year and helping to facilitate that work, to facilitate that vision. So that's perhaps an example of, right, the policy, right, which the policy goal, if that's important to enough of you, that would be the policy goal. The corresponding implementation goal, or maybe the tangible for the upcoming fiscal years, we really want town staff to focus on the data project with the committee. So that, to me, is an example of maybe how we can kind of, you know, work, work through some of these items and perhaps help you, you know, whittle, whittle down the list of that.
That's really helpful, Maria, thanks.
So I'll, I'll go back, I mean, I'm kind of a, Sean, sorry, now that I'll read this my own goal here. Explore shared services between Town and Simsbury and Simsbury Board of Education. That's universally something that is high, but that's already being done, right? You've very successfully done that, and I would think that because we've already successfully done it, it's one you're going to continue to look at. So that, to me, I don't know why I've got that as my own Board of Selectmen goal.
I mean, we're not done, Chris, is my point, is we want town staff to continue to focus on that, is what we're saying. Don't shift your time somewhere else.
But it transitions into, it transitions into a natural goal of Maria, the Town Manager's job function and responsibility. It transit, it's, it transit, so then it transitions in so that something else can be made a possibility, to be something new. Because we've already, to me, you've already successfully set on that path.
I wanted, so that, I, everybody agrees on that, the shared services. I put a low there because overall, I thought we were done because we implemented with the finance department, but it sounded like there are more steps to do. So where's, somebody needs to define what those steps are, those would be things that Maria would be doing, not just exploring the services. So if Maria's going to tell us that she's going to be working on, I don't even know what they are, one, two, and three are other ways of sharing services, and that's part of her tasks for the year, then I'm okay with that. But just to say explore shared services, what's the, what's, how is that defined? What does that mean? I have no idea.
Right, so that would be, again, the policy direction, that that's important to the board to, again, explore shared services opportunities, right? That's the overall vision.
Mm-hmm.
Again, implementation comes from, again, a good example would be our ongoing integration of the finance department. This past year, we took a look at some potential options with facilities management. We've shared with the board and will continue to do work on looking at options related to sharing fleet management services. We recently, also, within the last few years, are sharing services with risk management, right? So there's sort of this continual process of, again, when a potential opportunity arises, you know, leadership at the Board of Ed, leadership at the town, evaluating the feasibility, looking at this. So again, that's where sort of the, the staff work comes in, right, to implement your vision of exploring the opportunity. That's, that's the policy goal. And then we're going to work on, you know, the staff work of the analysis, the research, et cetera, to, to bring those possibilities forward to you.
Maria, help me out, though. Hold on, if, if we, if we didn't have that on our priority list, and it's not in your job description, and we load you up with 12 other goals, are you going to have staff capacity when those opportunity arises to focus on them? Or are you going to be tasked elsewhere and we might miss those opportunities?
Yeah, I think that's a fair point, right, is that we want to try to make sure that our goal lists, both for, for the policy goals, as well as, you know, my goal list, are manageable and not too excessive or aggressive. I think one thing I have appreciated with this board in the past is there was sort of an understanding with the Town Manager's Goals, is that, that this is a little ambitious and that we most likely won't get, be able to get to everything, but also that it's flexible, so that if something important arises during the year, that I can shift the focus as needed. And I think a good example of that would be, for example, addressing a number of issues that arose in regards to ambulance services past year, right? That was not on our radar during goal setting for the previous fiscal year, it was something that happened midway, but it was very important, and I worked very closely with Sean and with Eric on that. So that's an example of sort of being flexible and being open and sort of, I think, I have appreciated the, the board's approach is that, yes, while we're trying to create a goal list for myself and the organization, is that understanding at times priorities do need to, to shift during the year, but also, right, that it's sort of a desired state, and sometimes we won't be able to get to every single thing on the list, and maybe that, you know, handful of ones we don't get to, then carries forward to the next year. And so again, that's sort of how the board has handled it the previous four years, I believe now.
I mean, one thing that would be a suggestion, because I think we do need to drive these home soon, because we need to be able to set the Town Manager Goals also, now that we're into August. But could we set some kind of limit where we said, okay, we need to get this down to like a reasonable number of like six to 10, or eight, or whatever it is, and have one final work session where we do this and we can discuss these? Because I think, even though there are some things we could pull off of here that everybody has said low, or everybody has said high, it, it sounds like there's so much context that's being lost and like what, somebody said no, whether that's really a no, I don't, I don't think it should be on here at all, or like, I think it's a duplicate, I mean, I think some of that needs to be, we, we, we just need, I think, a work session to do that.
I proposed that earlier to, I, I mentioned it last time to have a special meeting, I guess, I didn't think people were on board, but I mentioned that to Maria earlier tonight, because I didn't think we'd have the bandwidth to go through this tonight, which I, I'm feeling like I don't, I don't know about everybody else here. And that, I was thinking, if we don't have a meeting on the 22nd, which is a Monday night, I don't know what other conflicts exist, if we could have, and town, town staff has to work anyway, we could do it earlier and just kind of try to bang through this. No?
No, I'll be on vacation, unfortunately.
That was my only suggestion.
You don't need to wait for me.
But I was going to say, the following week.
The 29th?
We don't have a meeting that week, I'm just going to pull up the calendar.
Okay, yeah, I have the 29th, there's nothing done either.
So while you're speaking, I just, so, because I hate to talk. So just as an example of what I was looking at this, is that Parks and Recreation, which is something somewhat close to me, so I'm biased towards, which I recognize and admit for transparency, prioritize filling gaps in trail connectivity, especially a tariff filled gap. If you look across to those, it's either medium or high, right? Well, I think that we, we have loudly shown and demonstrated our, and the enthusiasm and our commitment to connect tariff fill to, to the main part of town, to the, it's actually in place and ongoing, okay? Now, the next one down, conduct capital improvements in Simsbury Farms with context, within the context of Parks and Open Space Mastery. I can recognize why likely many people here probably put that as low, because we are investing, we, we always, it's an ongoing investment. But the difference here... But the difference here, this statement, is that within the context of the Parks and, our Open Space Master Plan, which we haven't done. So that's why, for me, it's high, but it's okay. But that's why I highlight that as something that is, it would be something that is new. With a new priority or a goal of ours, because we haven't looked at the investment. And it's, this, that's duplicative of other plans on here as well. So that's how I was, I would just providing some color as to why I looked at it that way.
And see, that is context that I wouldn't have. So I voted low, because I thought, well, of course, we must already be doing this. Why else would we have a master plan?
Sure, we fixed the condenser. We put, we're putting, we're painting the interior of the, with the nettings being done. The irrigation fund, some study was funded, but none of that is in the entire, we never, we haven't had a discussion around investing in Simsbury Farms as it relates to the consultants told us we should be looking at.
But you could even add.
Chris, and I took it as the reality is there's no money in the capital plan with all the schools right now to deal with that, and it's a budgetary item versus a goal item.
Well, and I include, I, I was going to say, to me, all these, the invest in athletic fields, which, Chris, you pointed out, is part of the master plan. The facilities master plan, they're, to me, they all fall into the long range capital planning, which is our top goal on the top. And these are, to me, subsets underneath that, looking at the master plan, what items on all of these master plans are the priorities for us as a board? And that's what we should be focused on and trying to fund over the next budget cycle, or the next, in our long range planning. Because you can pick out the, the fields, I could pick out the golf course. I think we should put, you know, everybody has something else. But as a whole, that, we should be prioritizing what's included in that plan. So I guess it's, everybody could look at it in different ways.
There are only four on here that have three to six highs and with mediums behind that. So that's engage in long-term planning of capital. That's explore shared services between the town of Simsbury and the Board of Ed. That's prioritize filling gaps in the trail connectivity, especially tariff fill, and create a MOU with Main Street Partnership.
Yeah. Those are our top one, right? I mean, that's what you're getting at, right?
Well, I'm just saying, they have Ms. behind, you know, do you pull those four out? I, I don't know how you do it, but I'm just saying, those are our only four out of how many are on here? A lot that have three to six highs.
That's a good point.
I, I think that's a starting point to make some decisions, because again, then we add another four to six that are mediums and lows. As Maria described, or whatever the number is, and that's essentially our, our focus for the next year plus, right?
I just pushed back and say.
It doesn't mean we're ignoring the rest of it. And to further what I think Chris and Wendy were just saying, Wendy, I think we're making this point, is I think if the goal on there was to execute the strategic master plan for the Parks and Open Space, we'd all rank that probably medium. At, at least, right, if not high. So that would probably make it on the list as well. Right? Is what you're saying, Wendy?
Did you say open space or?
The, the, conduct capital improvements to Simsbury Farms in the context of Parks and Open Space. If we basically, if we change that whole section to, you know, rank and execute the strategic master plan for Parks and Open Space, we'd all probably rank that medium or high.
Yeah, just like the facilities master plan items too, right?
Right. So if we bucket those, instead of making town staff go back and do an exercise for us, there is consensus around investing in those items to execute on the plan, which is really the strategic vision, right? And when we get to the budget, we make the decision on what we prioritize, when, where, and how, knowing that that was one of our top priorities, that we want to invest in Parks and Open Space.
Yes. Like, this doesn't, this is like a flat sheet. There's no structure or tiering of goal versus an action item. It's, it's very hard to look at it, in my, in my opinion.
We made confusing goals that, I mean, these are ours, right?
I know, I know.
We blurred the lines of strategic and execution. So I think we need to clean them up. And Wendy, if you and I want to, if we want to do it together, because again, these are our goals, I'm happy to, to kind of clean those up and bucket things. And then again, that working session could perhaps be much shorter and more effective, which did we capture the consensus of what everybody believes we should be investing in as a community?
I think we're gelling, I think we got an, we got a framework of an idea of things to do there, Sean. And the three things I heard were, I mean, are, are, I'm, sorry, let's, we could have a second, let's have another meeting? That's in the very near term.
Yeah.
Okay. Have a condensed, town staff, sorry, condensed this list with the things that are, don't, just optically, make it smaller. Like, I don't, okay, so that when we go to that meeting, there's fewer to look at, okay? Is that a fair statement? And then, this is again, my idea is clearly, I'm pushing it hard on you guys. But if there are, Heather, I, I challenge, like, if we just took, if we just naturally took the highs, the collective highs, and made them goals, I still think there's a little bit of value in having Maria challenge some and say, these are already expected as part of my core job. And that's, that's all I'm asking, is that, is that possibly be, be part of the culling process for this next meeting?
Yeah, again, I think we can definitely assist with that. Again, because I do think things that are more organizational in nature and less strategic, less policy oriented, less community vision oriented, did make their way onto this list. So again, I think that's probably where we can be helpful and kind of narrowing it and at least providing our professional opinion that like, no, we think this is administrative, this is implementation, this is not strategic, this is not policy oriented. So we can certainly provide some feedback and, and input on that, absolutely.
But one thing I do want to say, like, we, our, our big goals are really, that, to me, the topic areas are, are the goals. Our, our goals are to have like strong financial management, right? Take care of public health, well, well-being and safety. Like, everything falls into these buckets. I mean, it's just what do we want in those buckets? You know, having an economic development strategy, we keep talking about that. We have some, we, we talk about getting an MOU. Those are the big, high level goals of our board. But what are the items that we want to have as the action items for this term, I guess? And then out of those, so, keep saying the same thing, I don't have to say it again. Out of those, what are our, what are Maria's action items? Almost her goals should kind of peak off of some of our goals here, because she, it could all be one big sheet where you start with the main goal, the initiative, which is, you know, engage in long-range planning, consolidate the master plans, which we would have to do in the budget. And then, does that translate into some, an action on Maria's part? And that would be in her goal, you know? The, the, the good one to, to, to look as an example, because we really don't have this, is the Main Street Partnership MOU. To create a real economic development strategy, we have the economic, the commission, we have the chamber, we have, we have Main Street, right? We want a good economic development strategy and a vision for downtown and for our businesses, right? We know a piece of that is having a functional relationship that works with Main Street Partnership, because they are highly paid. I wouldn't say highly paid, but they're paid to do a job for our town. So how does that fall into that? Then what's Maria's role in that? Is it navigating and making sure that the MOU is created to the consensus of the board, the town, the council, and, and Main Street? So it all, it all flows together. It's just like, I think, I feel like we need a consultant here, which I'm going to say, next time we do this, we're doing it in a day with a consultant. I'll pay out of pocket to do it.
I used to facilitate these and I'd be glad to let my services.
We have one on the board. We haven't listened to input, yeah.
Well, let's just say next time, because instead of going from January till now and we're, we've changed, you know, we're, we're thinking differently now, because we're in it now, to just, next time, do it all in a one-day session and bang it out. And also then from that, we can kind of get some town manager goals, I think, would be what I'll do next time, if I'm still here. So I don't know where we're going with this, honestly, just.
I thought we just, I thought.
Well, I think we, we have to, I mean, we have to, we have to meet again, because we have to decide what these are.
Where we're going with this.
Let's just get a session. Let's get a special meeting on the calendar.
That's where we're going.
Well, you were on vacation, so when are you around?
I would recommend, perhaps, that we look at the week of August 29th, because that's what we call, we get these a few times a year, our, our fifth week months.
Oh, got you, got you. Okay, that sounds good.
So are folks on vacation?
Because school starts on Wednesday. I'm free the 29th.
So I think we can be really careful, right? School starts on Wednesday, so we, I think, should definitely avoid the night prior. And so maybe, you know, what we can do, if, if you want to do it here, or we can send out an email tomorrow, probably looking at like Monday or Thursday, perhaps, that week. So it's not the first day of school or the day, you know, beforehand.
I, I will be not here, starting on the first. So I can only do the 29th.
29th. Yeah, and we can start a little earlier.
Guys, I can't do the 29th.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to do the third, I know it's the day before, can you do 30th? I know it's the day before school, but if we do it earlier and not at night.
No, I got my, I have my kids Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so none of these days work for me.
I'd be happy to miss it. So.
Does the 24th, 25th, 26th work?
We have the, we have the ambulance check in the 25th, and I think.
The taste of Simsbury is the 25th, some of us are going and have invested.
Well, yeah, so what if we just, I can schedule out far enough to come earlier versus a 6:00 PM meeting.
So something like during the daytime, possibly for folks?
Okay.
One o'clock?
Yeah, I could commit to do something. Sean, maybe you can check your, your.
We're already trying to move the AMBO meeting up.
Yeah.
Because of the taste, so.
Oh, move it up that day. We can't move it to another day, I guess.
I think, right, or I think we need to try to move it up. I haven't emailed, I didn't hit send, because I didn't have reception, Wendy, but I was going to suggest trying to move it up early in the day, so we didn't have a conflict with the taste.
Yeah. The more important.
I'm not back in town to the 24th, but you don't.
Okay.
We could do the 24th.
So I think we can find a date, but I'm still concerned that we're going to spin unless some, one or two, or however many of us take some initiative and, and rework some of these. Because again, these are our goals. So the offer's there. I can look at it myself, or Wendy, I can partner with you, whoever, but I, I think we need to consolidate some of this, because I agree that Maria can provide us some context on strategy versus execution. But these are our goals and we need to drive them. And if we get back into a session with 70 goals on the page, we're going to go nowhere.
I, I was going to suggest, what if, as an alternative, what if everybody created their own dream goal sheet of what they would envision as the goals? And then we tried to merge those as a team.
I don't think that's going to be successful for us.
As long as you get five goals. If we all come in with forty goals.
You guys had a lot of goals last time. Are the goals from 2021, is it quite a big sheet? So.
And how many do we, how many do we have, Maria? Was it 12, 15, whatever it was?
If you take out the EDC work plan, hold on a moment, I can tell you, there weren't.
It was a lot. We didn't get to them all. I mean, again, I just.
Just one moment.
If we all come in with 40 goals, we're essentially starting the process over.
But that's, that's a good example, Sean. We had it, we had a, if you look at our old one, we had 15. And there were things that were struck off as they were accomplished, just like exploring shared services between the town and the BOE. That was, that should be in mine. Mine struck off, because it's been accomplished, but it doesn't mean it's not continuing to be ongoing. So there are things, this list can be very quickly barred down.
Because I agree, as long as they are in an execution item somewhere else. But if they get deprioritized and the town does not have the capacity to do them, then we lose, we, we don't, they don't just become, because people didn't create capacity all of a sudden. So as long as town staff has the capacity for that to be an ongoing effort, remember, our staff prioritizes their work based on what we focus on. And if we don't focus on it, then town staff doesn't necessarily prioritize it outside of their core responsibilities. So if we've truly transitioned that to a core responsibility, I'll bite.
Okay, will you bite?
Opportunity for shared services is not a core responsibility.
Okay, will you, will, will you bite, right, right now, if, under public health and wellbeing, if we strike provide mental health services and strike evaluated the need for existing town communities, which are no, that, that, those right there, just by someone just doing that, because like to Amber's point, those are low or no, this list naturally becomes smaller. And I'm just asking somebody to do that.
I crossed them off on my list. I cross off the pollinators, no offense.
Somebody in town staff is paying attention to the pilots, so when we want data and we want an answer and we're asked to fund social workers, we are able to make a decision. I don't want to get into a position where we deprioritize something and no one pays attention to it. And then we sit here and go, why don't we have any data to make a decision?
But you just said, come back, we need to come with five goals. It, it, there are, there are five things on here outside of those that are higher prioritized. So naturally, they should become the five then, if that, if that's your methodology.
I'm just saying.
And we funded the mental health for the next two.
I was doing five out there. I'm, I'll do this for a living.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I thought there was some sort of method to that.
No, I think just looping back, Chris, I thought you did a nice job of summarizing, again, what I think I was also hearing for consensus, right, is we'll work to schedule a follow-up meeting. It sounds like perhaps the 24th or 25th, we can look at maybe daytime, evening hours, we'll, we'll send out and kind of pull some times that might work. We're going to work on condensing the list. We will, again, try to highlight the highs, the mediums. We'll, again, provide some, some feedback in terms of organizational versus strategic. So if something is organizational, we'll recommend, you know, removing that from this particular list. And then, Sean, I do appreciate, you know, your offer to assist with also, I think, just doing a little bit of work in advance. So if there are, you know, one or two board members who want to work with us on, again, like trying to, to, again, condense the list, we would certainly, you know, welcome, welcome and appreciate that help.
Too bad we didn't think of this two months, four months ago, because we've just been dragging this out without any direction and we keep talking about it. And, you know, we had the two sessions where it was going to be presented and we'd have a direction and we're, it's August and we don't.
Yeah, you know, again, it's, it's challenging, right, when sometimes boards just find consensus a little bit easier, sometimes they don't. So just sort of in terms of thinking ahead, it's, you know, it's, it's really hard to say. So our two past boards, I think, kind of gelled rather quickly around consensus. We did, I believe, with the previous two boards, one three-hour special workshop of generating ideas. And then within the context of a, a regular meeting, the board finalized their list and it only took one meeting. So that was just sort of an example where those boards had, and I think it's natural, right, some boards just maybe come together a little more easily with consensus and vision. And some it takes a little, a little more, and you see a little bit more of like the sausage, you know, getting, getting made, so.
I think we're taking this really seriously, which is why we want it to be reflective of what we all think, is my feeling. And not just, you know, that's how I feel. Like, I, I own these, I'm responsible for what these say and look forward to doing that. But, you know, just don't want, I want them to have any value and meaning. So however we get there, you know, if we don't get there till September at this point.
All right, then, did you, do you try to organize, what you just said, Wendy, I appreciate that. You own these. Do you try to organize quietly, not quietly, but with full transparency, with, with Heather or Sean to take a, I'm comfortable ceding some of that to you guys.
I know Heather's really spent a lot of time on these, it seems like. It sounds like she's gone through, she knows all the Hs, all the Ms., had done a lot of detailed work on them.
Well, I was, I was more looking as well as, you know, we have to do, well, she has eight that are adopted 2021 Board of Selectment goals. As Chris said in his email, what's the capacity for, which was a very good point, of town management to, what's their bandwidth to support our policies? And I guess that's a little bit of a concern that I have. So if these are all ongoing, you, you know, we have to remove some to be able to support the policies that we are implementing for the next two years, not 2020's board. And so I don't know how we can say, well, she's going to carry forward these and then also add ours on. If there, if you're saying there's not capacity for it, then we're a new board, ours, then that she has new, there are, there are eight adopted from 2020 on here. And even if you look at a number of them that she has as high and low, a number of them are on our high-low, and they don't align. The majority don't align.
Okay. So, so let's, so wait, so the next step would be like just trying to get another meeting together?
Yeah, 24th, 25th, I'll be open all day, both days, if that's possible, anybody can do that. Reduce this list, like go back, reduce this list for the clear things that don't, won't make it, because they're low. And that will just reduce the list naturally.
Yes.
And then we'll just go back and then just hammer out the ones that are high, high convictions and just make sure that we, they're clear that they are not, that they are policy and not already.
And based on the past, what, what is a number that this should be condensed down to? 12, 15?
I was just looking, you know, the previous list, there were about 20 that were not inclusive of. were not inclusive of the EDC work plan in, in the past, and, and that was not what we heard during the goal setting this time around. They would also tack on the EDC work plan in addition to their goals. So if you take out the EDC work plan, the last board had about 20 high-level goals.
Okay.
Which, compared to your current list, that's less than, less than half on, on your current list.
One thing could I?
Most of them were medium or low, right, Maria? There's only a few highs on there.
That's my recollection. I have to go back and look, but that, that is my recollection.
Can we, one thing that I didn't have, and I don't think, can I have this in an Excel spreadsheet format?
Yeah. I think I sent it in Excel.
Was it in there? Okay, sorry.
Excel.
Sorry, I didn't know if, it wasn't just, I was just looking at the PDF, probably. All right, hold on, that's probably.
Wait, did I almost said on something? Almost there.
Okay. Did you send it separately in a PDF? Because it's in the PDF. You sent it separately?
Yeah, in the packet, it's in a PDF, but I emailed it.
Okay, great, okay, great. I was just off the packet. Okay, so let's just move on. Executive action.
We move on with some direction given, right? Maria, you're going, okay, thank you.
All right. Where's my agenda here? Okay, so we do have, still have some agenda items here, that I'm trying to get back to. Somebody wants to help me find where it is?
Uh, the next one.
Okay, we're skipping the proposed town manager's goals. We're skipping that one.
Resignations.
Yeah, trying to get to the page here.
It's 107.
Okay. Resignation of Scott Wilson from the Historic District Commission.